You're live, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'd like to call this Greenville County Council meeting to order, and we will start with the invocation. I'll call on Counselor Farmer.
Let us pray. Gracious and merciful God, we come before you today aware of our differences, our weariness, and the weight of decisions that lie before us. In moments like these, we confess our need, not just for answers, but for your presence, your peace, and your power to bring us together. In Philippians two, or, uh, chapter two, verses two through four, urges us to be like-minded and have the same love, being one spirit and purpose. Lord, help us lay down pride and pick up humility to consider others and absolve ourselves, to seek not just, and not just be heard, but to be understood. In James one five, we ask for your wisdom, the kind that comes from you alone, your promise to give it freely, and that we need it now. Give us calm minds, discerning hearts, help us navigate the complexity without fear and without ego. And as Proverbs eleven fourteen reminds us, there is safety in a multitude of wise counselors. We're not alone in this task. Help us to listen with openness and speak with care and lead with courage, even when it's hard. Lord, may this meeting not be defined by conflict, but by our shared calling to serve something greater than ourselves. May we walk out of this room more united than we entered. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Few of us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May they be seated. The agenda, we have the approval of minutes.
Move approval of the minutes from our June third meeting.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we'll move to, uh, proclamations and special recognitions, which I have a note that says there are none, so we will bypass that and move to appearances on current agenda items. And I'll go ahead and get this out of the way before Ms. Stone begins the process. We do have quite a bit of people, and, uh, I've tried to be super lenient in, in the past, but with everything that we have going on, I am gonna hold us to our thirty-minute time period. We, we don't know how the people are signed up or anything like that, it's just however you arrived. And with that, we'll get started with Ms. Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first speaker is Jack Logan. His topic is the budget.
Welcome, sir.
Chairman, blown to your colleagues, my name's Jack Logan, I live at fifty fifty-one Old Augusta Road. I stood in line at four o'clock today because when I hear the discussion about law enforcement and first responders, I have to step up. Our law enforcement put their life on the line daily. And with crime is at an all-time high in each one of your districts, myself and my nonprofit, we're out there day and night. That's not one district that is safe right now. And for our sheriff and his men and women to do their job, they got to be able to go to work not worrying about how they're gonna pay the mortgage, the rent, the light bill, the water bill, and take care of their families. Not only that will help decrease maybe some police-involved shootings, not saying that they have been in the wrong, but with them having a peace of mind, they may take another avenue before using force. I ask you to please, I'm not gonna, I can't state a rate, what they should make, but they should be paid with good pay. That's not a job that I do in healthcare, not a job at BMW, not a job at fast foods, not a job as an attorney can take the place of men and women who put their lives, their life on the line each day to protect each one of y'all, and if, every person in this room, and every person who live in Greenville County, and ask y'all to take it serious and to support our sheriff and all first responders to keep us all safe, because you see what's going on in the country. And not only in the country, right here in Greenville, just go down Woodridge Road, Five, Firefords, after midnight, you'll see what Jack Logan see. Go to Greer, go to Travelers Rest, and you'll see what Jack Logan see. And our law enforcement have to deal with those people, day in and day night. Please take care of our law enforcement so that we all can live in peace, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
Mr. Chairman, the next four speakers are Ruth Patton, Becky Godby, Thomas LaGrand, and Amber Stewart.
Thank you for that, Ms. Stone, and she calls those out, but just so you can come up and go ahead and be in line, and it'll save everybody, give more people time to speak. Welcome.
Hello, how you doing? Uh, my name is Ruth Patton, I reside at fourteen Tattersall Road, um, two nine six oh five. Um, I have been advocating for affordable houses since God allowed me to walk again. Um, I was once that person that need affordable housing. I worked, I worked starting at the age of fifteen, and until the age of forty-two, I was diagnosed with severe rheumatoid arthritis, which is a, um, long, a long-term chronic disease that causes inflammation in the joints. It's caused stiffness, depression, fatigue, and loss of mobility, um, which led me to receive disability because I lost my job and my house. At that time, I had a five-year-old daughter, um, thank you, Jesus, for public housing, and for my daughter, for we wouldn't be homeless. Um, you see, Jesus advocated, uh, for people like me, teachers, restaurant workers, janitors, housekeepers, groundkeepers, sanitation workers, CNAs, veterans, police officers, firefighters, EMS workers. Jesus showed a great deal of compassion, so as leaders and Christians, it's our obligation to show the same. There is no way a person without income can pay three times the rent and still put food on the table and with necessities. Uh, it, it was by the grace of God that my daughter's now eighteen years old, graduated from high school, and is going to college in the fall with scholarship, with four-point-five grade point average, because we had affordable housing. So I pray, I pray that, um, when you make your decision, please show the same mercy and grace that God shows us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Council members, county council, um, members of the public, I'm pleased to be here, I'm Becky Godby, I'm from one oh five Gale Drive, Malden, and I'm affiliated with GOAL. GOAL is Greenville Organized for Accountable Leadership. I'm here to support the Budget Amendment One, reinstating the two million dollars into the Affordable Housing Fund. Affordable housing is a public purpose. This is something I want my taxes to go towards. Affordable housing is a huge concern for our, for our police, EMS, firefighters, teachers, nurses, hospitality workers, and so many others. According to Rocket Home, the median home sales for Greenville County are over three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars. Here's an example. Let's say a police offer, officer is lucky enough to find three hun, to find a three-thousand-dollar home. After paying sixty thousand dollars for the twenty percent down payment, their monthly mortgage is over twenty-one hundred dollars. If you take that police officer who is making fifty thousand dollars a year, that's approximately four thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars a month. If you subtract the two thousand one hundred dollars, that police officer is paying over fifty percent of their gross, fifty percent of their gross wages to the mortgage. This is not sustainable. The numbers speak for themselves. We need our police, EMS, teachers, nurses, hospitality workers. Let's help them be able to find affordable housing. Please support Amendment One to reinstate the full three million in the Affordable Housing Fund. Thank you.
Bert?
Tom LaGrand, District twenty-two. My grandmother lived in a poor neighborhood off North Main Street in Columbia, South Carolina, until she was ninety-eight years old. She lived on her own for thirty-five years and worked in a sewing plant until she was eighty-two, and she never had a driver's license. She was able to do that because of Columbia's bus service. Maybe that's cause, because Columbia gives forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents per capita for their bus service, whereas Greenville gives seven dollars and fifty-seven cents, and now we're gonna undercut that. For Greenville Transit to maintain services, we must maintain funding. A great thing about public transit, it has empowers us all to do something outstanding for our local community. Now, we're concerned about massive traffic and infrastructure problems. Doesn't it make sense to fund something that can assist with easing both of those? We need to maintain the current level of services for now while setting our sights and goals for increasing services in the future. Now, I would love nothing more than to be able to go downtown without worrying about paying for parking or for an Uber, but far more important are the people who depend on this system to get to jobs, to get to the doctors, to get to the grocery store. This system provides mobility and viability for some of our most vulnerable citizens. In so many ways, the Greenville where I grew up can be a giving and generous community. We do not need to leave people like my grandmother behind. Instead, let's continue to offer those who need it most the services that they require to be full participants. Let's not make the mistake of assuming that cuts mean efficiency. Instead, cuts can make it stream, make things extremely inefficient for some people. We hear constantly about how fast we're growing, yet we spend pennies on the dollar compared to similar communities that are not growing as fast as we are. Greenville is one of the most difficult cities in the nation to advance economically if you are born here. We don't need to be great city, a great city for people who move here with money, we need to enable people who live here to make money. You, as leaders, have to see how these are connected. You can't advance in life without a good education, and that includes good libraries. You can't get a better job if you can't get to the job. You can't keep roads repaired and relieve traffic unless you're gonna offer alternatives. And you can't seek more affordable housing if you don't have an effective way to get to school or to get to work. Not only are we a generous community, but we're wealthy. But we can only truly be rich by how we care for those who are in the greatest need. It's time for us to stop making excuses about what we can't do and find ways to do what we can to improve life for everyone in Greenville County. Fund the buses.
Welcome, Ms. Stewart.
I'll just have him read my remarks. Uh, my name's Amber Stewart, and I'm here tonight representing Greenville Housing Fund and the Greenville Affordable Housing Coalition. Our coalition includes many dedicated partners who have worked closely with the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority to ensure that the critical funding in the Affordable Housing Fund supports affordable housing efforts throughout the county. I know that each of you cares deeply about our neighbors, those experiencing homelessness, seniors on fixed incomes, first-time homebuyers, and working families trying to make ends meet. That's why I want to be clear about where this money goes and how each dollar plays a pivotal role in the housing ecosystem. Since twenty nineteen, Greenville County Redevelopment Authority has strategically managed these funds, with over seven-point-eight million already invested to support housing projects across the county. Let me share just a few of those examples of what that funding has achieved. Fifty-three homes for homeownership were built in Greenville, Simpsonville, Simpsonville, Greer, and Berea with partner organizations like Habitat for Humanity, NEMI Community Revitalization, and Homes of Hope. Twenty households received down payment assistance, helping them move from renting to owning. Funding supported thirty-six transitional housing units, helping individuals and families experiencing homelessness stabilize their lives. Sixty-three homes received critical repairs, preserving housing stock and allowing seniors and vulnerable residents to safely age in place. And lastly, the fund supported the development of over seven-hundred-and-eighty-one rental homes, including a hundred-and-seventy-eight specifically for our seniors. As you can see, this is not a one-size-fits-all approach. Each partner brings a unique expertise to the table, from homeowner construction and repair, to financial literacy, homebuyer education, rental development, and more. Together, we're building a system that supports residents across the entire housing spectrum. At a time when the housing crisis is deepening, with a twenty thousand affordable housing deficit in Greenville County, and forty-seven percent of our renters and twenty percent of our homeowners' cost burden spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing, now is not the time to reduce the county's investment in affordable housing. You've seen the outcomes, you've seen the impact, you know the money is used strategically, responsibly, and with great care. So tonight, I ask you to please support the amendment that will reinstate the full three million in the county budget for affordable housing. I have enough printout tonight, if you wanna see it in full detail of everything I just lined out, that was directly reported from G-C-R-A, so I'll hand it off if you guys wanna pass it off, but thank you for your time.
Stone?
The next five speakers are Matt Rollins, Denise Arnold, Tracy Byrd, Lee Turner, and James Hoard.
Welcome, Mr. Rollins.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Matt Rollins, I'm a lifelong resident of Greenville County, live at four Westinbrook Way, and I serve as one of the pastors at First Baptist Greenville. Tonight, I'm speaking as part of several organizations involved in local housing efforts. I chair the Rent Stability Working Group of the Greenville Affordable Housing Coalition with Amber. I serve on the Board and Housing Committee of GOAL Justice, and I lead a congregation-based eviction prevention effort called the Hosea Program. First, thank you all for your leadership and service to this community. I'm here tonight to ask that you reinstate the full three million dollars in the budget for affordable workforce housing. When, when that funding was introduced, a couple of years ago, many of us celebrated that demonstration of genuine care for our vulnerable neighbors and a real commitment to housing justice, and it's very disappointing to see that investment being pulled back. I'm also here because I'm genuinely curious, and I'm here to listen. What makes this feel like the right time to reduce support for such a critical need? I trust that those in favor of the reduction have reasons, and I'm sure you have taken this decision seriously, but I'm asking you to reconsider the impact this funding will have for our vulnerable working families in our county trying to find housing that they can truly afford. Greenville County has one of the highest eviction rates in the state, around three times the national average, and requests for rental assistance at churches are rising fast. In fact, congregations like First Baptist and several others have felt compelled to come together and pool our resources in order to more effectively help prevent families from being evicted. But that is only addressing the symptom. This body has already helped move us forward in an effort to address the core issue of lack of affordable workforce housing, and there's real momentum here if we just stay at the table. Other counties in South Carolina are watching Greenville, people in this community are watching too, let's not step away now. Reinstating the full three million would be a powerful way to show that we care and that we're committed to building a future where everyone has a place to call home. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Denise Arnold, um, I am the vice chair of, um, G-C-R-A, on, I'm on their board. I wanna plead with you all today, um, to not gut our affordable housing program. It's, I feel like it's more of a fixing the roads and the housing, and, and housing, and that shit, that's, that's a false choice. We really need to create something that's gonna be advantageous for everyone. Greenville is a great place to live, but your choice right now to cut the affordable housing program will hurt everyone. Trying to pull two million dollars of a three mil, of a three-million-dollar budget is not just short-sighted, it's ineffective. I know the newly-elected official, uh, council members are trying to fulfill a campaign promise to tax, to cut taxes, so right now, you're struggling or scrambling to find ways to cut these taxes, but you're cutting the very program that will increase revenue, stabilize tax burdens on the residents. You will create a ripple effect that will devastate the working family. You're gonna be pushing out critical care workers, teachers, factory workers, you're gonna weaken the economy and worsen the housing crisis that we already have, um, and you're affecting the people that make Greenville great. Your constituents really need you all to lead with foresight and not desperation. If your constituents were ill-advised about the penny tax, they would've voted for it, they would've seen the repairs on the roads by now, we would have funding to, to continue funding for affordable housing opportunities. Instead, you all are walking in, y'all are walking around with a flashlight in the daytime, trying to find funding for, and you can't find it. Um, I, I commend Cornell for evidently doing the budget better than y'all thought he was gonna do it, because y'all are really trying to struggle, trying to pull funding from places that don't need the cuts right now, or at all. Um, I do plead with you all, please do the right thing and not gut our affordable housing. Leave the three million so it won't affect the workforce to local businesses, the companies that are here and that are coming, and those manufacturers that are coming. This is not a good look for Greenville County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tracy Byrd. Um, I stand before you with a series of questions that are in my mind ahead. Uh, I did not realize the value or the importance of affordable housing until my mother received the letter. She stayed downtown Greenville in one of the, uh, older houses that was huge, and then they had split those houses, that house into multiple, uh, rental space, if you would, and it said, "You got thirty days to get out." So she had to relocate, and then, uh, Councilman Fant had been working on, uh, some projects that would, uh, for affordable housing, I know how passionate he is, because I attended most of his meetings, uh, that he would have, and in those meetings, he would talk about with great passion and pride about affordable housing and about being what someone could afford. And then I thought that reflected on my mother and how she was asked to get out in thirty days, and then she found housing, but it was just hard. And then, like I said, I stand before you with questions, is this wise? The timing, and then also, I remember, this reminds me of a particular passage in the Bible where the Pharaoh, where Moses was to go down with Aaron and to, and talk to the Pharaoh and say, "Let my people go." I say, "Let my people go into affordable housing, but don't let the money go." So why, why we, what we need to do, I think that we need to dissolve, to dissolve this matter with wisdom, and, uh, there has to be a suitable way, as Councilman Fant has said time and time, that we know that there are other ways to do this. So I don't know why we keep going down the roads and needing to go back and forth over a decision that's not gonna get us to nowhere, or a bridge that's gonna lead us up, somewhere that's gonna lead us to homelessness. So, we need to make better decisions, and then I ask you a question, if government is by the people, for the people, then who is county council for? Because by the people, for the people, say otherwise. It's just an emoji, I don't know. I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if it's for the people, by the people, let's consider what the people are saying, and I do believe that there was people that was up here, oh, I'm gonna walk away when, there was people.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Turner. Ms. Lee Turner.
Hey, everybody, I'm Lee Turner, I'm from East Gant. Four weeks ago, I talked about the, uh, benefits of the penny sales tax that amounted to a hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar-a-year gift horse that y'all wanted to look in the mouth. I understand some of you have softened your position a little bit, and you like the transportation penny sales tax, which I actually liked better anyway, but I didn't think it would pass before because it had the, didn't have the, um, grocery exemption in it. But let me remind people, of the thirty, hundred-and-thirty-million-estimated-per-anum, forty million of that was gonna be gifted by people who happened to pass through Greenville County. Forty million. All right, let's look at the other side, what's the real price to the taxpayer? And I don't wanna hear a seventeen percent tax increase, 'cause that's the worst math I ever heard. If you really do the math and consider that sales tax is paid on disposable income and how much that really amounts to, people who have no disposable income won't pay anything. Somebody such as myself that has about five hundred dollars a month in disposable income, it's gonna cost me five dollars. That's not seventeen percent, that's point zero zero one percent. And the more you earn, the more you pay, that's the best progressive tax you can imagine. Okay, now, now I'm gonna tell you how to fix it. You take that twelve million dollars, which is the twenty-five-dollar charge on everybody's license that amounts to twelve million dollars, that's what the county has right now to spend. You take that twelve million dollars and, and take it, uh, take that money, you use six million of it to compensate for the property tax bill, y'all are trying to claw back from what we passed last year, which amounts to six dollars per hundred thousand in value. In other words, it amounts to nothing to the individual, but it's six million dollars to us, and you take, you now have two million for, for affordable housing, so you have four million dollars left. You take the twelve, you use it to offset the six, you leave the property tax like it is, and you continue to fund affordable housing. It's your job to educate your constituents on the benefits of workforce housing. I'm not in favor of taking care of, you know, poor people that don't work, I'm in favor of giving the people the tools to succeed with, and when you do- And when you do that, you have a healthy economy and things just tend to work. So I've given you the solution. Get that penny sales tax back on the ballot and pass it.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Horford.
Good evening, council. James Horford, I'm at 255 Gum Springs Road in Taylor's. June 11th, 2024, almost exactly a year ago. Greenville County voters joined together to change county council. We voted for strong conservative leaders who would put taxpayer well-being above personal interests, leaders who would put in the time and ask hard questions and make even harder decisions, leaders who would prioritize improved infrastructure for all of Greenville County, not just private developers and pet projects. I'm standing in front of you tonight, in front of you to recognize the work that has been done the past six months and to express appreciation for the budget you're voting on today. You have kept your promise of chipping away at the unprecedented millage increases from two years ago. You have allocated significantly increased funds to roads, a serious need in our county. You have reduced spending on boutique issues and focused on funding real and immediate needs. You deserve public praise and thanks. I have watched you sit through workshop after workshop, asking questions, debating difficult subjects, and working through a $488 million budget that will impact over 500,000 people. Thank you for putting in that time. I have heard you ask uncomfortable questions. Some of you have expressed conservative opinions and made others, that made others call you extreme. You have been subjected to smear campaigns and misinformed lobby efforts, but you still show up and speak out with a commitment to serving taxpayers with transparency. It has not been all been smooth sailing. I and others have also noticed some counselors playing political games that work against conservative efforts. Not here to name names, tonight, the games need to be set aside. Tonight is a pivotal moment, another night of hard choices. There is one amendment in particular that I must speak against, the amendment to move funding from roads to affordable housing. I ask the question, when did it become the financial responsibility of taxpayers to subsidize private developers and provide so-called workforce housing? If the council wants to make housing more affordable, it should be doing what it can to minimize the tax burden on all homeownership and make housing more affordable for everyone. There are some conservatives on this council who have voted with liberal coalitions before. The voters of Greenville didn't vote for deals, horse trading, and liberal coalitions. We voted for change. There are a lot of amendments on the budget tonight. Even if your particular amendment don't pass tonight, I'm asking that the conservatives come together to support a conservative budget, a budget with a millage decrease, a budget for funding roads, a budget that reflects change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horford.
Mr. Chairman, we have time for one more speaker. It's Ed Paxton.
All right. Mr. Paxton.
I'm Ed Paxton. My mailing address is 1 York Circle, and I own an acreage up on Parish Mountain. I've owned it for many years, bought it, paid for it with tax paid money, and I've been paying taxes on it for many, many years. It fronts on a county road with a 48-inch water line in it. And it's about 1,800 feet frontage on State Park. And part of it's a steep, you can't, Billy Goat can't walk on it. It's not for sale. It's located within the parameters of what everybody is referring to as Parish Mountain, the environmental area. It's about four miles to Traveler's Rest. I request exemption. I request an exemption from all of these rules and regulations that's been put in having to do with development over the years. Because I have been doing a lot of work in the last year or so as to development of a facility on the mountain using a zigzag elevator system that is being used in Germany. This zigzag system allows you to go up, round like this. It follows a track, much like the electric systems used on the rails in Japan. This regulation that you people are pushing, or people are pushing, having to do with Parish Mountain, will nullify that. Now, if you're going to, if you're going to kill something that I have saved my money, bought into as an investment, then I want somebody to start thinking about how I'm going to get compensated for the rights I have. And I don't see them in our rules and regulations as we know them today. I think it's be an unfair taking of persons' assets with the kind of regulations that are trying to be put in effect for this so-called environmentally cis area on Parish Mountain. We don't even know what an environmentally cis area is. Right here is environmentally a sensitive area. These regulations that are being adopted as it relates to Parish Mountain is a bunch of hooey.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton. All right, we are moving to the next agenda item, which is public hearings. I believe we have several for this, for 7A land development regulations amendment and cluster housing. Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, this public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from a public regarding ordinance to delete Article 11 of Greenville County Land Development Regulations and to prohibit new cluster developments in Greenville County. Ms. Stone, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bradley, we have four speakers, two in favor, two in opposition. The first is Steve Bickel.
It's hard to follow that crowd. Steve Bickel, 6 River Ridge, Greenville. Mr. Chairman, councilors, over the years, we were told that cluster and noncluster had the same number of lots. We have since found out that was wrong. I have proven it mathematically, and now we have multiple drawings of multiple subdivisions that prove, on average, cluster provides a third more lots. If a subdivision has 100 lots with conventional zoning, it now has 150 lots with cluster. Along with increased density, cluster allows attached dwellings on 1,500 square foot lots. It is sad that if you live next to land that is zoned R12, that attached townhomes are allowed on that land utilizing cluster. Finally, there are no minimum lot size in cluster. You can have 500 square foot lots and can do nothing about it if the open space is sufficient. Development must be driven by zoning. If you want increased density, ask for it. If you want attached dwellings, secure the proper multifamily zoning. Cluster is circumventing council's authority. You all should have more say in these developments. By utilizing zoning, all the subjectivity is taken away, and the process is much simpler. If you have common open space, now you have an HOA, maintenance expenses, which increases with size, and expenses for liability, which is an important issue. One last point, with increased density, if you add up all the area of the rooftops, driveways, and sidewalks, and other impervious surfaces with the higher density, I contend that you have less open space than you would with conventional zoning. Conventional zoning has greater contiguous open space. They're called backyards. Cluster is wrong, poorly designed and written, and is advantageous to the developer. It has to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Deborah Manning.
Good evening, county councilors. My name is Deborah Manning, and I live at 210 Von Holland Drive in Greenville, South Carolina, smack in the middle of Sans Souci, the neighborhood there. I'm speaking to make sure that we do not continue cluster developments. I moved here 10 years ago with my family, and I tell you, I came from California, and in California, they completely devastated my state, my native state, with such things as cluster developments. I think the county is being played, very simply, by developers who don't seem to understand that the density is fine in the city, but we're a different breed of cat out here in the county. We need a little bit of space. And I have to tell you, it's amazing the mathematics. Mr. Bickel pointed out the misuse of the mathematics about using roads, using retention ponds as being quote unquote, open space. That's not open space. That is just playing the game, and I don't think that we in the county need to have the game played against us. Once again, a lot of us say, well, the planning commission does not go ahead and approve cluster developments. Yes, we do. We just recently had one where there was 58 units proposed, and in fact, they reduced it down to 34 units, and in fact, gave a large open space so that the community could actually meet as a community, as a neighborhood, have kids play baseball, enjoy the outside rather than being back to back and belly to belly. So I'm asking at this point right now, we need to look very, very carefully at cluster developments. We need to at least have a moratorium, if not completely get rid of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers in opposition. The first is Sheri Barrett, and the last is Emily Poole.
Welcome, Ms. Barrett.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Sheri Barrett. I'm the Land Policy Director at Upstate Forever. My address is 5 Calhoun Hillway, Greenville. I spoke on behalf of Upstate Forever on May 20th in opposition to eliminating the cluster ordinance. At that time, we urged you to appoint a committee of stakeholders to work with staff to identify the real issues related to cluster housing and address those within a timeline determined by council. I am back to urge you again to vote no on eliminating the cluster ordinance. In May, I highlighted how the cluster ordinance provides a critical mechanism for more fiscally and environmentally responsible development, one that encourages open space preservation, all high priorities for Greenville County residents. We emphasize the very real consequences of leaving developers only one option, conventional development, which requires minimum lot sizes and encourages development of every inch of a property, a license for sprawl. I won't repeat those comments in full this evening, but I will submit them to be entered into the record tonight. Nearly a month has passed since that meeting. No replacement ordinance has been introduced, no suggested amendments have emerged, and stakeholders have not been convened. Additionally, as budget deliberations near conclusion, the time set by this council to reconsider the UDO is rapidly approaching. We urge council to vote no on eliminating Article 11. Then, in July, begin the process of reconsidering the UDO. The UDO details proactive solutions intended to resolve multiple issues, including issues this council is contemplating and struggling to address, like the cluster ordinance. Look at the UDO with fresh eyes and an open mind. It is far and away a more practical and efficient starting point than taking a reactive Band-Aid approach of fixing the county's disjointed collection of development regulations, one by one, and each in isolation. Work with staff and stakeholders to introduce changes that further strengthen the UDO to better support the high quality of life Greenville County residents deserve. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Ms. Poole.
Good evening. My name is Emily Poole, and I live at 26 Tyrion Drive, 29607. I am the Upstate Staff Attorney at the South Carolina Environmental Law Project, a nonprofit public interest law firm where our mission is to use legal expertise to protect land, water, and communities throughout South Carolina. I am here to share my concerns with Item 11B on tonight's agenda, which would delete Article 11 from the Greenville County Land Development Regulations relating to cluster developments. Cluster development, also known as open space development, is a land planning tool that groups houses and other structures in a smaller area of a site, leaving more room for green space on the rest of the land. This undeveloped open space often elevates the most unique features of a site, such as a water body or a scenic view, and can also serve as natural amenities that many people want their housing development to have, like walking trails. As opposed to conventional development, cluster development preserves natural areas, protects habitats and biodiversity, reduces impervious surfaces like roads, driveways, and rooftops, curbs urban sprawl, and promotes sustainable and efficient land use. As we all know, Greenville County is experiencing explosive growth that is putting incredible pressure on our community's public infrastructure and public services. Unfortunately, our natural environment is bearing the brunt of this growth too, and we must do what we can to protect our natural spaces from being lost over development and sprawl. Cluster development is an optional tool that local governments can use to combat these pressures and create communities that are sustainable, walkable, and preserve open space. In fact, the availability of cluster, of the cluster development tool is enshrined in state law as SC Code Section 629720C1. While local governments, of course, have home rule and can craft innovative measures to guide development and protect the environment, when the General Assembly gives guidance on some of the tools in that toolbox, local governments should listen and utilize them as much as possible. Getting rid of tools that have proven they can be used to reduce sprawl, preserve precious green spaces, and benefit public welfare is simply not an option as the county works to keep pace with development pressures and encourage smart growth principles. All that said, I do understand why this conversation is taking place and surely agree with all those who believe Greenville County's open space subdivisions are not adequately fulfilling their intended purposes. However, the solution should not be to delete the cluster development tool altogether, a decision that could bring about many unintended legal consequences. Instead, we should bring all relevant stakeholders to the table and work collaboratively with staff and council to create stronger and better protections in the cluster development portion of our LDRs and zoning ordinance. Several possible ways that this could be done is by increasing the percentage of open space that must be included in each development, removing buffers and setbacks that were not buildable areas to begin with from being included in the open space acreage, or by adopting the UDO and trying out its revamped approach to cluster development. As I conclude, I want to stress that we can all work together to address the problems with our cluster development scheme and create a more robust framework that protects our environment, discourages sprawl, and promotes sustainable development. I urge you to vote no on eliminating Article 11 from the county's LDRs and allow time for positive change to be made. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Stone is the last speaker.
Sir.
I declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, councillor, true.
Is it, is it normal for us to put the initiating of the zoning tax amendment on the consent, and nowhere, it's not debatable and all that, but is that something that normally goes on the consent agenda? Number one, or item A?
We can pull it out.
Wouldn't that go in the first reading, or?
I'll consult the attorney on this one.
A lot of times it comes out as a report from the thing. It wouldn't be a first reading because it's not an ordinance or resolution. It's just the initiation of the process, so. Well, I have seen it in several places. The last time we did it was not in the consent agenda, but it's, so.
I'm good, I just wanted to have.
Okay.
I'll restate the motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We will move to nine, which is resolutions. Councillor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 9A, Resolution to Initiate an Impact Fee Ordinance and Associated Capital Improvement Plan in Greenville County. Plan in Greenville County. I move for adoption of resolution directing the Planning Commission to initiate and review studies to make a recommendation for County of Greenville Impact Fee Ordinance and Associated Capital Improvement Plan covering the unincorporated areas of Greenville County.
Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Trip.
Just a couple of questions. Why are we sending this to the Planning Commission?
I'll let, I'll let the attorney confirm what I'm about to say, but per our rule, per the Impact Fee Act, this is just part of the process, and it has to come from the Planning Commission. They have to conduct the study.
That's accurate. The actual state statute, the process starts by this body adopting a resolution, and the resolution is to send it by state statute to the Planning Commission, which then is the body that, under state statute, is supposed to come up with the capital improvement plan as well as the proposed ordinance for the impact fee. It's, it's required by state law to go that process.
Okay. And can I ask you why we're doing this?
Why we're, why we're implementing the impact fees?
Who's the ordinance? Whose resolution is this?
Mine.
Okay. Why are we doing this?
Well, because I think a lot of people even in the room would, would admit that they feel like developers have kind of had the opportunity to come into Greenville and profit from it, but not invest in our infrastructure. And, and just to kind of, and not just to poke at the developers, but to, to me, this is, this is a tool that the top five counties in the state minus us have implemented because of the same issues we're facing now.
Okay, but you understand clearly, the developer is going to pay this, and then he's going to pass it on to the people that buy the homes. This is a direct pass-through to taxpayers. So while we're patting ourselves on the back for $6 in tax reductions, we're going to give someone, I don't know, I've heard the number, $4,500, we're going to charge the, the, per house for the builder. That goes right back to the taxpayers. You talk about making housing unaffordable. That, that will do it.
Well, and, and I'm not saying I disagree with you completely, but that's what this study is for, to ensure that that is correct, because I've also heard that market rate value can only go so high, so there's only so much that they can actually increase the price anyway.
And, and there's, $4,500 is what I've heard is the reasonable number, so that's.
And that, well, that didn't come from, to the chairman for sure, because I don't know what the number would be until we get the study done.
This is a mistake, and I'd move to table this and send it back to committee, wherever it came from.
Is, is that a motion?
Hold on. Could I, just to clarify, uh, just to remind the council that it, it wouldn't go back anywhere. The motion to table would be.
Okay. Motion. Okay. That's what I want. I, I mean, and I have a clear record. I'm not pro-developer here. I'm pro-taxpayer. This is a direct pass-through to taxpayers. And, and this is the misnomer of this impact fee. I mean, this is a direct tax on our citizens, so should this be an eight-vote? Eight, should this require eight votes?
No. It's a resolution, so it would not require.
I'm asking rhetorically.
Oh, sorry. Not bad.
And again, I would just state that for the people listening, this is the implementation of a study. It has nothing to do with actually starting the process. So in the study, we should learn that if a lot of those things that you're saying are true, which they may be, that study should reveal it, as well as any workshops we have. But if that's your motion, we, we take up the motion.
I mean, I, I don't mind taking an L on it, but I, I just, I want to raise the awareness of people that this is not about the developer. This is about taxpayers.
If, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Shaw.
Um, not tooting my own horn or anything, my PhD from, is in impact fees. We need to specify what kind of study you're talking about here. The Supreme Court requires a rational nexus, meaning the tax you take must be connected to the infrastructure. That is one type of study. It sounds like the study you're talking about is something different from that. It's, which study are you talking about?
And, and again, I'll lean to the attorney to verify that I'm correct, because I had to study this myself implementing it, but it, it is a study required by the state to even see if the impact fees can be applied to what you're saying even, that they would have to look through those metrics and see if we could meet the qualifications to even look at impact fees.
Okay, well, I, because what I believe the state is requiring is the legal requirement to pass Supreme Court muster on there is a rational connects, a rational connection. So what I would just suggest here is that for all of us, we, we need to know our vote is either, we're going to go forward with this or not. We can't get a study to tell us whether we should go forward with this or not, because that's not what it's going to tell you.
We're just, we're, we're basically just doing what the state law requires us to do. There's, there's no other way to do it. It's the only avenue in the door to even begin the process.
Correct. I understand that. I just want everybody to understand that, that what we are doing is we are creating, we are doing a study to say that, that, that there's a nexus between the two, and you're not going to get some of the information we're talking about in this discussion. So I, I'm for impact fees. I just want, um, everybody should know that even the people created them say they're not a growth management, a growth curbing tool. They are just a cost-sharing tool or a cost-paying tool. So this will be increased money, uh, for infrastructure, but it will not slow growth whatsoever. That would be needed to do some other way.
Well, and just to continue the discussion, I don't think anybody specified we're trying to necessarily slow growth. If that is a benefit, we'll take it, but I think it's also to address creating proper infrastructure as we're developing Greenville versus just plowing up ground and putting something down and then having to readdress it 20 years later.
Understood. Understood. It's just easy to get some of these concepts conflated together.
Absolutely. Counselor Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some clarification. Would it be the Planning Commission members themselves doing the study, or is there ability for them to appoint an ad hoc committee? How does the stakeholder piece work with all of that?
As far as the Planning Commission, they would have to set up their own procedure. They could do what you just suggested, but also, I've never seen this done without the appointment and hiring of, of an expert in the field and, and to provide and help meet the statutory requirements of the capital improvement plan, which is supposed to address some of the things Councilman Shaw shared with everybody just now, and, and they're, they'll help steer it. And so part of this process, I believe, will eventually have to involve procurement of, of such a, of such a company or experts to do that.
Sure. Then maybe a quick follow-up then. Do we have the money? Have, do we have budgeted somewhere for that? Where would that money come from?
Have to come from Planning Department.
At the expense of something else.
Currently.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I renew my motion to table.
All right. Everybody understand the motion? Counselor Trip.
Ask for roll call.
Roll call.
He's asking to table.
Just take it from roads.
Taking everything.
Not going to have anybody to roads, I think he's taking.
Mr. Chairman, you have four in favor, eight in opposition.
All right. Thank you. The motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to hold and ask that we get some additional detail related to the questioning that we were talking about this afternoon, and maybe we rediscuss it in two weeks.
Can I just, can I ask a follow-up process question? And it might be for.
A second.
County attorney. So we're sending this to the Planning Commission. I assume that's what state law requires. Do we have any input in the process?
Yes. When it, when, in the process, your input will be whenever they produce a product. It will include a capital improvement plan for you to review, as well as proposed ordinance, at which point you would be tasked as the council to adopt, amend, and do whatever else you need to do, or project, or whatever it is that the council felt they needed to do with regard to that ordinance. So it's just going to, from the Planning Commission will be essentially, they'll do it like, they have to, under state law, to do it kind of like they do the comprehensive plan review, and then they present it to you as a body, and y'all would vote on that, according to state law.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I just like, my vote, I hit the wrong button. I didn't realize it. I would like my vote to be recorded as against tabling. Sorry. I just realized that. So I would like to make sure that gets into the record. I was, I was against tabling. That was a mistake.
Thank you, Counselor. Dr. Fant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple of things. We looked at impact fees back in 19. Nobody was here but me, Ms. Seaman, and Mr. Trip. We went down this road, and we decided against it. And this was in 19. Everybody shouldn't understand that we want to go after the greedy, the greedy developers, but of course, like anything else, that when the developer develops the lots, they're going to pass that cost on to the builder, and the builder in turn passes it on to the buyer. The other thing is, just be, it's not a money grab. State law restricts how and where you can use the money. If you do a subdivision in Simpsonville, that money has to be spent right in that vicinity. You can't have a road project that needs addressing in Greer and grab the money and take it to Greer. Here's a statistic that I want everybody to be cognizant of. There's two things. In 2022, the, the person who made the median income in Greenville County could purchase the median-priced house in Greenville County. Since 2022, that number has dropped precipitously. Fewer people who make the median income in Greenville County can afford a median-priced house in Greenville County. Housing prices are skyrocketing. We're just talking about affordable housing. It seems like an oxymoron to talk about affordable housing, and then at the same time turn right around and talk about impact fees, which add cost. There was a study that was done that says if you did not already own a home in Greenville County today, 80% of the people in Greenville County would not afford, be able to afford to buy one. So let us be cognizant and thoughtful before we try to just dump, dump on developers, because they're not going to allow themselves to be dumped on. They're going to put that money toward the buyer. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just reiterate my motion to hold for, again, for the reasons, this is some good conversation, and I think it's worth our while to continue it and make sure we have stakeholders at the table, and to, we understand also, you know, the cost of, you know, sort of moving forward. I think that's an important detail we should think about.
Look, I, and I'll say this, since it was something I presented, I, I have no problem with holding it, because I think that a lot of this needs to have a lot of public attention, and some of these discussions need to be had, because everything that I've read says that this is honestly what the developers would want us to say, so I'd love to verify that, and I think that holding it would be fine. So I would, I would entertain that motion, and my colleagues would as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, 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 may offer an amendment to this to say, instead of 180 days, we do 360 days, and that we get it going, because what happens here, I've noticed on council, is things get into the held, and like, like, just like Counselor Fant said earlier, it's been held, it's been held in finance for two years now, so let's, let's not hold it. Let's say 360 days, and it gives us time, we can even, you know, to, to get things looked at, or even a little, little longer timeframe, but at least let's get something going. The inaction around here kills me.
Would, would it be shorter timeframe that you'd be looking to?
No, 360 days, that they have to get a report back. So we have them a year to work on this, actually get, get the community input, get the thought going, get all that stuff going, but let's, let's, let's start something. I should put it on hold and let it fall into the nebulous of Greenville County.
Well, just to say, my amendment was just to hold for two weeks.
Well, let me, let me verify this with, real quick, too. Is it, is the 180 days, was that part of the state statute, or was that something that?
It was a, that was a, a timeframe that, that was put in to have a timeframe. That, there's no requirement, state statute didn't require 180 days.
Okay. Okay. So your amendment is to alter the amendment to make it 360 days for the study?
Correct.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we need to vote on my motion to hold first.
Okay. Right. And yours to hold.
Chairman, and while we're still discussing.
Counselor Collins.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and the whole idea is not to get something steamrolled. The idea is to get the stakeholders to include builders, developers, even the realtors, to get in to say something, to look, here's what we are dealing with. It's a quality of life thing, not just the end user or our pass-through funding. I get it. Okay? So we're, we're trying to give this, and the statute does say the Planning Commission, after procurement of a source, okay, whether it's a consultant, a company, whoever, okay, you, you have to give them that opportunity to pursue it or even look at it and say yes or no. And then we have the ability, after we're presented, to vote up or down or amend, but the impact fee has to be specifically garnished, has to be specifically distributed, as Dr. Fant said, at the particular location. If you look at the state statute, you can't just pick it and go buy a bag of peanuts. You've got to use it geographically relative to that development specifically. So whether it's $4,000 or $10,000, I think 4,500 should be the minimum. That's just me. But we can go by the Planning Commission, which we believe we appointed, that they should be able to do that. And I think that's a logical way to pursue.
Thank you, Counselor.
I would just call the question of my motion to hold, please.
All right. Everybody understand the motion?
Hold this item for two weeks and ask for additional details related to the questions that we've all asked here this evening, including any associated costs we think will be attributed to this process.
Mr. Chairman, we won't have a meeting in two weeks. That'd be the 4th of July.
Yeah. Well, then our next council meeting.
When is the next? We only have one meeting in July, correct?
Like, whatever the July meeting is, the 15th?
So July 15.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All in favor of the motion to hold, please say aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight in favor, four opposed.
All right. So the motion passes, and we will hold this until the 15th. Next on the agenda, we have ordinances at third reading. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 10A, Glassley Mountain Fire Service Area, general obligation bond request. Mr. Chairman, make a motion, a, a move for adoption at the third reading, an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $1,100,000 Greenville County, South Carolina, general obligation bonds for Glassley Mountain Fire Service Area Project Series 2025-B, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended, to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is the FY 2026 Greenville County Budget. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption of, at third reading, of ordinance adopting the Greenville County, Greenville, the County of Greenville fiscal year 2026 budget.
Again, I believe we have amendments.
We do. Mr. Uh, Mr. Mitchell will, will do the honors.
Counselor Mitchell.
Mr. Chairman, I'm offering an amendment, but before I offer it, I vote for everybody on their votes, that they listen intently to our citizens who came here tonight and spoke on.
The relative.
Ordinances. They didn't speak on all of them, but they spoke on some of them passionately, and I hope that you'll take that into consideration when you vote. My amendment is to move, uh, to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget to provide. to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget to provide funding in order to establish a workforce house, housing down payment assistance program for Greenville County employees. Under the Affordable Housing Fund, increase other revenue to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, increase transfer in from Infrastructure Bank of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, increase operational support of, of two million dollars. And under the Infrastructure Bank Fund, increase transfer out to Affordable Housing Fund of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, reduce transfer out to Road Program, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And under the Road Program Fund, reduce transfer in from Infrastructure Bank, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and reduce the design build contract in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you. Everybody understand the motion? Have any comments?
I, I did have one comment, and maybe it's more of a question, um, because this has come up already with the teachers and, and, um, and law enforcement. I'm looking right now on the South Carolina Department of Education's website, and it says, Palmetto Heroes, a South Carolina Housing Finance and Development Authority initiative, is available to law enforcement, correction officers, teachers, firefighters, veterans, nurses, and EMS personnel. Um, and basically, this looks like it, this looks like we're, whoa, we would be trying to duplicate here. And, you know, I know the law enforcement is a whole different issue later today, but, um, this thing about down payments, and I know, uh, the sister of somebody who's on our board, who lived next to us, and, and then she sold it to another teacher, who I specifically remember using this program. So, are we duplicating something with this?
My knowledge, we're not duplicating.
Anything else, Counselor Shaw? Dr. Shaw?
Was that a question?
He, he responded back to it, and if you had anything else.
Oh, no.
He said he, he was not aware of it being a duplicate.
No, 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 thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I really, I, I appreciate this. I, I think just my concern is, you know, we heard a lot tonight about the deficit and the number of units. Um, and while I, I see this as a great way to help our employees, um, I worry that it doesn't address the unit issue. And so, I would urge us to consider thinking about, you know, how do we do that? Um, you know, two million dollars could do a lot in terms of, we heard tonight about construction, repair, allowing seniors to stay in their homes. Um, I love the idea. I would actually love to see us do both. I would love to see us have a program that helps our employees, but also, if we're gonna tackle the problem, we've gotta put more units in the market. And so, just thoughts on how we might be able to accomplish both those items.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Ms. Seaman, I am wholeheartedly in agree with, in agreement with you. We need to increase the units. However, what I'm trying to do is maintain the level of funding that we already have. The proposal in Amendment Five is to cut the funding to a half million dollars. And if we do that, we would devastate our affordable housing program. So, I would like to maintain the funding level at three million dollars, which will allow us to maintain units and possibly increase the units. But, it will take more money into the fund in order to really increase the units.
Thank you. Dr. Fant?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, for, I guess, the last eight years, this council has pushed a false narrative regarding workforce housing. People have said, I don't want to give my money to people that don't work, sit on the front porch, smoke cigarettes, pay cards, and drink beer, which is completely false. We have pushed back on that and finally got the truth out as to who these funds actually help. Essential workers, law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, nurses, schoolteachers, and librarians. People that we say we all care about. I still have colleagues on this council that say, my constituents don't want their tax dollars going towards workforce housing. That would be failed leadership on your part, because you allowed the false narrative to persist. These are the same These are the same people that are tax-averse. They will spend money and campaign night and day against any elected official that ever votes to raise taxes, even if it's necessary, and even if taxes only go up by five dollars. We must all understand that every dollar spent on workforce housing, we get back tenfold through additional property tax revenue over the life of the property.[951.63][951.63](applause) Which keeps us from having to raise property taxes in the future. Everybody in this room must understand that new housing construction is an important economic engine of any community. Let's talk about the two million dollars. It is less than one-half of one percent of the overall budget, to be specific. To be specific, actually, it is four-tenths of one percent of the budget, which is nothing. This doesn't qualify for the fiscal responsibility discussion. To oppose this amendment, we should just call it what it is: mean-spirited.[996.29][996.29](applause) Maya Angelou, in her bestselling autobiography, I Know Why the Caged Bird Sings, says, you don't have to think about doing the right thing. If you for the right thing, you'll do it without thinking. Before I close, I would like to ask those who present it tonight, everyone who believes that every person is an equal member of the human family regardless of socioeconomic status, and that having a safe, decent place to live is not a, is not a privilege, but a basic fundamental human right. Could you please stand?[1035.04][1035.04](applause) Thank, thank you so much. There's an old saying, that facts tell and stories sell. I was speaking with a friend of mine yesterday, who, Mr. McGee, he does live in District Twenty-One, um, and lives on a, in a palatial estate.
Andrew Rose.
And we were talking, and he told me he was tired of seeing me on TV begging about affordable housing.[1075.21][1075.21](laughter) Of course, you know that wasn't gonna go and get off the telephone. So, we had an extended conversation. And this is what I told him. You're in your seventies, and you could have a heart attack any moment. Would you want your paramedic to live fifteen minutes away from the office, and get there and be fresh when they, when you call? Or do you want a paramedic that lives in Pendleton, who has a terrible night's sleep, has to get up an extra hour early, and drive an extra hour to work? And by the time they get there, you call, and he's not alert to save your life. But let's take another one. Let's say a schoolteacher who has, doesn't get a good night's sleep, and she has to get up an hour early, drive an hour to work, still sluggish, tired. So she's no good for first and second period. And then by the time she gets to fifth and sixth, she's checked out, because she's got an hour to drive home and errands to run on the way. We gotta be smarter than what we do.[1135.83][1135.83](applause) I don't know, I don't know how many of you have read the book by John Nesbit entitled Megatrends. It's an old book. And he talks about the erosion of the middle class. And he says, when we get into the twenty-first century, America will not be divided by race, but it'll be divided by two classes of people, not black and white, but rich and poor. You will only have people with money, and people who work in retail and the service economy to provide goods and services for people with money. Because the manufacturing jobs have been traditional manufacturing, traditional middle-class jobs have been manufacturing jobs that are quickly given way to automation and robotics. And in the late eighties, Nesbit didn't even know anything about AI. As I've said before, all I can do is appeal to your moral conscience, and pray that the spirit moves to help you realize that every person is somebody, and that we should respect them, encourage them, help them, lift them up, and make sure that they're equal members of our community. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.[1207.01][1207.01](applause)
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I just, that was very passionate, blovating. Thank you, Mr. Fant. I appreciate that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that is, that is the, the meaning to a-
Excuse me, I'm speaking. Excuse me, I'm speaking.
I'm calling a point of order on you.
Oh, geez, Dan, stop.
I'm gonna call this back to order, and I'm gonna say-
Dan, stop.
Let, let me call this back to order and state that, that, uh, the doctor has also accused people on council of obloviating, so I'll let this one go, but I'll ask him that he'll reel it back in for the time being.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to pull up Greenville County Redevelopment Authority 2024 financial statement. Federal revenues from federal grants in 2024 were four million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, and five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Their total revenues were eight million, eight-point-one-seven-three million dollars. Their expenses, housing services, which is going towards public housing, two-point-nine million. Public works, four hundred and fifty million, four hundred and fifty thousand. Special projects and subrecipients, one-point-six-five million. Administration, are you guys ready for this? One-point-six-nine-seven million dollars. You're asking me for three million dollars of my money? Your money? The, the budget. You're asking for three million dollars of taxpayer money, which, okay, I grew up in an old farmhouse in nineteen, from nineteen seventeen, you see outside, and so I didn't grow up silver spoon, so don't let anybody on this council tell you I did, or I live in a palacious estate. You come to my house, and trust me, it's not palacious. When I asked Mr. Smith, the Director of GCRA, last week in the budget meeting, how much your administrative costs were, he said, I don't know. So now you're asking me to give someone who is in charge of eight million dollars, doesn't know how much their administrative costs were last year? I'm sorry, I'm just not going to do it.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call has been announced for this motion, this amendment.
Can you restate the amendment, please?
For Mitchell?
I move to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget to provide funding in order to establish a workforce housing down payment assistance program for Greenville County employees. Under the Affordable Housing Fund-
That, I'm sorry, that, that reminded me, I, I apologize. I'm not cutting you off. I just, with all the discussion that I was listening intently to, I just lost a little track. Yeah, I, I promise.
So, so you don't need anymore?
No, no, thanks, except.
Thank you, Counselor. All right.
Amendment has been restated with the wishes of Dr. Shaw.
Counselor Tripp.
This program is not money going to GCRA, correct?
As far as the, in the amendment, I believe it does go to GCRA.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, actually, we had discussions with them about managing it for us, since that's what they do. There wouldn't be any administrative fee for us.
All right. So we'll move to the roll call.
Roll call.
Chairman, you have five in favor, six in opposition, and one abstention.
All right. So, the motion fails. We'll move to the next amendment with Counselor Russo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I move to amend the FY 2026 budget to provide an additional three percent pay increase to specified public safety personnel, including Class One officers, Class Two officers, Class Three officers, dispatchers, medical staff, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, dispatchers, and coroners, excluding elected positions and directors. Under the General Fund, increase transfer in from Infrastructure Bank to two million, one hundred and seventy-seven, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Increase salaries and benefits for EMS, five hundred and fifteen, hundred thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-eight. Increase salaries and benefits for public safety, seven hundred and sixty-six, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Increase salaries and benefits Sheriff's Office and Coroner, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three. Under the Medical Charities Fund, increase salaries and benefits for detention and medical, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. Under the Infrastructure Bank Fund, increase transfer out to General Fund, two million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and two. Reduce transfer out to Program, two million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and two. Under Road Program Fund, reduce transfer in from Infrastructure Bank, two million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and two. Reduce design build contract, two million, three hundred and thirty-seven, seven hundred and two. All that to say, we, we've discussed this a lot. I think, you know, we looked at public safety as the number-one priority in our budget. Literally on page one, it is priority one. While I know we've all had discussions, we want to make sure we get as much money into the roads as possible. Uh, this is a way, this is minimally impacts what we're, um, taking out of roads, you know, less than two-and-a-half million dollars. This is directly going to the, the men and women that put their lives on the line for us every single day. Um, I think it's, I think it's high time that we, we give them a, give them a better increase than what we were initially offering. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick questions. One, um, do our animal control officers or codes officers qualify as any of these class officers? I know many of them are, you know, work on the front lines and work hand-in-hand with our officers, um, our deputies, and are often also in harm's way, unfortunately, and just wanted to know that. And then, my second question is, um, how does this affect, if it does, or relate to the STEP program that is also in place for the deputies?
I, I refer to the administrator on the first part. I don't believe they fought, they qualify under public safety, but I'm not sure.
Animal, animal control does.
So, yes.
And then the second part of the question?
The STEP program, this just, the STEP program, I think caps at sergeant, I believe. This, this covers the pay disparities where it's actually, you know, it's actually more lucrative to be a sergeant working overtime than it is a lieutenant and captain, which you're not eligible. So, we're trying to cover some of these pay disparities where it hurts people to actually promote, uh, pay-wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Farmer?
Counselor Russo. Um, does this delete the, um, positions that the sheriff cannot fill?
Yeah.
Cannot fill?
Yes, the, like, we discussed-
We, we discussed, um, the Sheriff's Office and EMS, uh, decreased the amount of positions that they got additionally into the, in their new budget. Um, so I think we decreased it by six and five.
This reduces the sheriff by twelve positions that were included. It does not touch EMS.
Yep.
All right. Counselor McGee?
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, Mr. Russo, I, I'm very sympathetic to everything you say here, and actually, if, you know, when you read my amendment, it, it's quite similar. The difference is, when, uh, knowing my income level and how, you know, I live fairly comfortable. I work three jobs. Someone making a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year doesn't need a six percent raise in Greenville County, especially not on the back of taxpayers. If you're a public servant, you enter public service knowing that it's not the highest-paid job out there. What people don't see, and what the public doesn't see, is all the benefits that go along with being a state employee. How many of you have a state pension for the rest of your life if you work for the county for thirty years? How many of you have healthcare for the rest of your life if you work for the county? Those are, those are, you know, what they call a total compensation package. And I'm not saying they're not important. I mean, they are the most important people in our society to keep order. That's, that's the government's number-one job, is to provide order. But, to be giving people who are making a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year a six percent raise, it's inconscionable in these conditions. Now, those officers making fifty thousand dollars a year? Absolutely. But that's why in my amendment, it's based on AMI. And I'm, and so I don't want to say I'm, you know, I am gonna vote no for this, but in favor of my own amendment. But, that being said, I, you know, I think we need to have a mechanism by where, I've heard this too, compaction and everybody, and, and Mr. Russo, you said it yourself in your statements, you know, an officer working overtime can make more. Well, I can't be concerned about overtime. I mean, when I do a pay scale, I'm not, you know, I can't go, well, oh, well, this officer's gonna work- go, well, oh, well, this officer's gonna work 40 more hours overtime if you make more than lieutenant. Well, that's, I mean, that's his prerogative. If that's the way the system works, and that's the way the system works. So, to, to say that, you know, a sergeant can make more than lieutenant with overtime, that, that, that's kind of a, a red herring. So, uh-
It's also a red herring to say they get lifetime benefits. That's not true. You said something that wasn't true, so I just want to let you know.
Point of order, please. I said county employees, I said, how many of you get benefits? I'm not saying every benefit-
Lifetime benefits.
All right, I, and I'll, I'll come to you soon as he finishes, I'll, I'll give it to you.
I interrupt you, I appreciate the same, same respect, sir.
Sure.
Uh, I'm, I'm not saying everybody's the same. I know the sheriffs are different from the county employees, or different from the city employees, I get it. The, the state employment benefit program is different for every employee, and it's not perfect, I admit that. I didn't set it up, so I'm not, I'm not saying it's perfect. But what I'm saying is, at this point, if you're making a large amount of money, you don't need to get that, you know, I see you have on here excluding elected-
When you find the rich cops, I'll, I'll, you know, I got a bridge to sell you.
Point of order, sir.
Let's try to maintain order. I know everybody's very, especially concerning public safety, everybody's very emotional, but, but let's let Counselor McGee finish up, and then I'll turn to Mr. Russo.
And you know, I get paid $30,000 a year for this job, right? You wouldn't know the number of hours I spend on it. I make about $2 an hour, okay? That's my choice, so I'm not complaining. What I'm saying, no, I don't play the guitar, but what I'm saying is, is I read everything. I have the data. And you know how many people that work for the county, both the sheriff and city employees, county employees, they're not making under 40 grand a year. It's a misnomer. I'm not saying they're rich, but the narrative is that everybody's making 45 grand. It's just not true. As a matter of fact, I have a spreadsheet that is published by the South Carolina, by the state of South Carolina, that shows you every employee in public service that makes over 50 grand. And let me tell you what, there's several hundred sheriff officers on that list. Some of them well into the six figures. I'm not saying I'm against public safety. What I'm saying is, we need to target these raises, and we need to target them appropriately. People making six figures do not need a 6% raise. I'm open to an amendment that would say, hey, if you make a certain amount, if you know, if we tier it, you make 2%, if you make 150 grand, you get 3% at 50, if you make 115 grand, I'm fine with that. But under the current way of doing it, a flat 6% raise, and you know what else? Here's another thing to consider. If, say we give the sheriff a 6% raise, okay, he makes $200,000 a year.
He's not getting a raise on this.
I know, but I'm just saying, I'm, I'm trying to make a point. Please, please stop the interruptions, Mr. Russo. Stop. I'm making a point. Did, did you?
Point of order. Can you have him removed if he's gonna keep talking?
Let's just, let's, listen.
I mean, the same thing, right?
No, no, and this is to the, this is to the public and, and to all my colleagues. We all know how to act.
I'm not dying. Stop.
And act like adults.
My point is, if we pay the sheriff and he gets, that's 12 grand in his pocket, does he need 12 grand? Does he need, he might, man, I wish I was making 200 grand a year. My point being, the officer making 50,000 needs 6%. The officer making 200 grand doesn't. And I get it, I get you, but what I'm trying to make a point is, the more money you make, you don't need a larger raise, because you're, 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 basically how you live doesn't change. All right? It does change it for the people making less money. If we paid Joe Cornell, we gave him another 10 grand, it's not, that's not gonna be a huge deal to Joe, okay? So, understand my point of why I'm going to be against this. You may speak now.
Counsel Russo.
Mr. Russo, we really call a question if you're ready to-
Yeah, I was just gonna say, on, on all those notes, for all the rich deputies and the paramedics, I request a roll call vote.
Call has been called.
Sure.
Jesus Christ.
Just making a point, though. The rich guys don't need a raise. I know, well, some of them are. You said directors. Go look on how much people are making, guys. Go look, go look. You haven't looked. You don't do shit research. Be involved, Joey. Be involved.
Nine in favor, three in opposition.
All right, thank you, so the mo, the amendment passes? Dr. Shaw?
No, that's surprising. Joey's, I, I voted for it, but it passed her.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Not that it was Joey doing it, I just, I, I had heard. I didn't know going into it it would be that. Okay.
All right. All right. Next is Amendment Three, and this is Counsel Alon.
Yes, this amendment is to provide funding for a performance review of Greenville County operations. Um, from the General Fund, increased transfer from the Infrastructure Bank, um, $500,000. Increased non-departmental performance review, $500,000. Infrastructure Bank Fund, increased transfer out to the General Fund, 500,000, and reduced transfer out to road programs, 500,000. Road Program Fund, reduced transfer in from Infrastructure Bank, and reduced design-build contract for 500,000. Basically, this amendment is to allow for what, what our people have asked for, as far as a, a performance review. It will allow us as counselors to look at how we are currently with our fiscal operations, how we're following policy and procedures, are we following them, and how we're following them. And the biggest part of this is, we hope to find efficiencies that will save us money through this review, and we can apply that money to things that are more important for our county. If it's something we're doing, it, it could be very small, but it could save us a lot of money. So it's, it's a good business practice to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a couple of questions about this. Um, one, how did we come up with that amount, and like, do we think it's enough? Um, you know, what kind of expertise are we looking for from a firm? Do we think one firm can do it? Is it gonna be multiple firms? Are we gonna look at all the departments, or just some of our departments? And would that depend on what kind of firm we might want to consider? Um, what if it costs more than the half a million? And then, you know, I guess, to your thought on finding efficiencies, um, what happens if the report comes back and it says we're understaffed, under-resourced, our folks are underpaid? You know, how are we gonna implement that if that's what the results are?
First, first off, yes, um, we would do an RFP for this, and we would, um, send that out for bid. Um, I've looked at different types of audits, and, and I'm familiar with audits, because I, I worked in the banking world, and we've done different types of audits, um, in my previous employment there. But I believe this would give us a good start. I don't intend on doing the whole, um, financial operations of the entire county. I think it would be, um, more than this. But we're gonna look at, um, suggestions of the auditor that we choose, and look at different efficiencies based on their recommendations, and also we'll interview some staff and get their, um, suggestions on that as well.
But do we think this amounts enough? I mean, what if the bids come in well over this, then what do we do?
If the bids come in well over this, we could choose certain departments that would be under this, or we could come back and ask for more money if we felt like that was necessary at that time.
Great. And then, again, what happens if it comes back and it says that we're, we're super efficient, that we're under-resourced, we need more technology, our, our people are woefully underpaid, and, you know, what, what's gonna be our response to that? Like-
Our response will be to go to Mr. Cornell and say, we need some more things in operation, how do we get there? And then we, as a council, would look at that as well as the Finance Committee to see what we can do.
What happens if we're gonna need more money?
Then we, we, again, we turn around, we go to the Finance Committee, just like we bring anything forward, and we see what the council wants to do.
I just, I, I, I think we're, I don't know.
Dr. Phan, and I'll go to Counsel Tripp.
This is for the administrator. I, this feels like one of these little gotcha moves. We are a governmental entity. Please explain to me, or to everybody here, what audit we go through every year to ensure that everything is as it should be for the taxpayer.
Uh, Mr. Phan, Dr. Phan, we are required by state law, by federal laws, by our bond laws, uh, and a number of other grant laws, uh, to have a financial audit every year. We have that every year, whether we like it or not. They come in, they go through, and do their, uh, review of the financial operations of the county. Uh, they issue their opinion, and, uh, you know, which is, uh, very, very important to us, of course, that it comes in clean, and we get clean opinions. Uh, and that's based on their evaluation of what we've done from the financial side, the accounting side. Uh, we also have our, of course, rating agencies in New York that review that. Now, these are the financial Wall Street finance experts. And so they review the audits. It's all done according to the generally accepted accounting principles, uh, like it's supposed to be done. And, uh, we get that information, share it with council every year, it's posted on our website. And, uh, so, uh, from my understanding, this would be, look at more of the actual operations. For instance, how many staff do we have for specific department? Is it efficient? Are they doing, can they do it a better way? Is there a, uh, another, uh, method to do it? Uh, which will be very interesting to see what comes out of it. Um, because you talk to the different, um, entities, and we have a lot of professionals here that have been at different entities, and have seen how it's done in different places. And it's very, uh, interesting to see, uh, how we're able to do what we do with a lot fewer people than what you see in other places. So what Ms. Seaman brought up about, uh, the, the risk that we have, is we're gonna, it's gonna demonstrate probably that we are, uh, understaffed significantly in a lot of areas. And, uh, that's gonna be a challenge, because, uh, as you see, this budget was somewhat of a challenge, to come up with money for all the things that everybody thinks we need to have. Uh, but without people, uh, we can't do our job.
What's our bond rating? And, and how does it compare to other, um, counties across the country?
Our current bond rating is AAA from all three rating agencies, which is the highest you can get. Uh, there's none better. Uh, I don't know what the latest numbers are, but there's 300, or 3,300 counties in the country, and for a long period of time, there's about 28 of us that had that. I think that number has, may have gone up a little bit the last couple of years, uh, but we're one of a few that have it.
Don't we have fewer employees per capita than most of the counties?
That's, uh, based on the SCAC, South Carolina Association of Counties, uh, and they do, uh, track that, where, uh, based on the number of employees per capita. We were at the lowest. Uh, one county, I don't think actually, uh, reported, but we've always been in the, in the lowest actual number, or maybe in the lowest two or three. We are the largest county, which is counterintuitive.
So since we don't like to raise taxes under any circumstances in Greenville County, and this, we would spend a half a million dollars to tell us that we don't, we're short on employees, then what are we gonna do? Because we definitely don't raise taxes and go get any new people.
That'll be up to council.
Okay, this is my last thing I want to say about this. In my opinion, this is taking a half a million dollars, putting it in the street, and just let the cars blow it away.
Counsel Tripp.
Counsel Alon?
Yes.
Can you just tell us in non-banking language why we need this, why we need this?
I did. Basically, we're gonna look at efficiencies. We're gonna make sure that-
How are you, how are you gonna do that?
We're gonna look at different things like positions. Do we have enough? Do we have too many? Are we approving too much overtime? How many widgets are we spending on? Can we maybe buy those widgets at a different place? Can we get discounts? It's gonna look at, how do we go with our own policy and procedures? Now, Joe referred to the other auditors that came, and in that meeting, it was, it was in the oversight meeting, and I have the rest of the committee members here. We asked the question, does this look at policy and procedures and how we're doing that? Does it look at efficiencies? And the answer was, it is basically just giving a condition. So it's like giving a financial statement. It's not looking at, um, process and performance and things like this. This goes deeper, and it makes sure that we're not only spending our money correctly, it's making sure it goes to the right things and being done the right way.
So, you know, I've watched a lot of Matlock shows in my life. And I've heard of these, these things called forensic audits.
Right.
Okay. When you do a forensic audit, you kind of start with, oh my God, there is a problem over here, we gotta go get something, we gotta get that checked out. Or you start with a, a premise, we are having problems in this area, or that area, and we need to look into that. We need to dig, we need to peel the onion back a little bit. This, it comes across to me as just fodder at a political fish fry that gets you a lot of applause. But what are you doing? Why are you doing this? What's your premise about Greenville County that would make you want to go spend half a million dollars to, I mean, do you, are you gonna have egg on your face if it comes back and everything's great?
No, actually, that would be great news, wouldn't it?
But you're willing to spend half a million dollars on that?
I think the people of Greenville County deserve to know that their tax money is being spent in the correct way, that we are not wasting it as council members or as employees, because it is their money, not our money. So, yes.
I, I can tell you one thing. You come down to Malden, Golden Strip, and let's go knock on doors, then you won't find one single taxpayer that wants to spend half a million dollars to figure out if we're spending taxpayer dollars right. I mean, a waste of money.
But the opposite-
When we have to have a financial audit, the state requires us to have a financial audit. I mean, we are under the microscope from Wall Street to get our double, uh, AAA bond rating. I mean, you know, look at the SCAC numbers, point after point after point indicates, Kelly, that you're barking up the wrong tree on this.
I disagree, Dan.
You don't have, you don't have a premise, a working premise of what's broken in Greenville County. I, or I haven't heard it, and, and so that's kind of what I'm asking. What's broken in Greenville County that makes you want to spend half a million dollars to unpeel that?
Who said anything was broken, Dan? We're gonna make sure that we're operating in the highest deficiencies. And if you come to Greer, South Carolina, and you knock on the doors that I represent, they're gonna tell you that an audit is way past due.
We, we have an audit every year. I, I mean-
Financial position audit. It is not a policy and efficiency audit. There's a difference between a performance audit and a financial statement.
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment.
State your amendment.
I would like to amend this amendment to send the half a million dollars back to the taxpayer in the form of, of millage reduction, rather than wasting, blowing $500,000 on a forensic audit. Um, so my amendment is-
I didn't know why that we are doing a forensic audit. That's from your mouth and your thoughts.
Performance review.
Thank you.
As far as procedure goes, am I allowed to make my comment before we address this? Or, okay?
Oh, that's fine. I mean, I'm not trying to shut down debate, I'm just, I wanna-
Here, here's my thing, Counselor Tripp alluded to this. What, um, what is broken? I would say what's broken is that right outside this glass panel, inner fiberglass or whatever it is, there's a sea of people, and even more people outside of that, that do not trust government. They, for whatever reason, it, it could be because of rumors, it could be because of bad messaging from council, but they don't trust that their money's being spent properly. So yes, I do believe that if a half a million dollars had to be spent so the citizens of Greenville County could say, my money's being spent the right way, it's worth it.
That, that is, I mean, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, that is-
I have, I'm, I'm not finished.
Okay.
That, it's, it's also, if we find there's inefficiencies, every citizen in Greenville County would want us to make those changes to make sure that we're providing services properly through the county. So it would, again, be worth a half million dollars. It's not just about finding corruption or missing money that's been spent somewhere improperly, it's just about transparency and showing them where the money's going.
That's right.
I, I, I would submit that this is all about, you, you, this is, you're operating under the premise that, that if you say transparency enough, people are gonna think there's a problem. And if you say performance audit or performance review enough, people are gonna think there's a problem. You don't, I mean, this is a solution looking for a problem. Okay? I mean, show me the problem, and let's figure out how to solve it without having to spend half a million dollars. And so that's, if we're gonna spend half a million dollars on something, let's send it back to those people, but, to, to the taxpayers. It might only be a buck fifty per person, but that's all you guys sent back in a, a mil and a half reduction? I mean, so let's take this half a million dollars, not spend it on some fancy law firm or accounting firm, let's send it back to the people. That will That will engender more respect from taxpayers than spending it on a, you know, problem looking for a solution.
Again, I'll, I'll call the amendment and let us vote on it, but I just think it's strange that we're arguing whether we're gonna study efficiency and it's not saying we're gonna find anything bad, it's just saying we're gonna find what's there and try to address it. To me, that's a tool we should've been using for twenty years.
That's right.
Chairman, if I may?
Rick Collins.
Yeah, and, and again, this is not that we're trying to find a problem. This is oversight that, as you said, and I believe in your statement for the road tax, people don't trust us with the money and we have to do something about that. That was your words, okay?
You're buying their trust?
No, 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 we're gonna illuminate-
That's a pretty expensive price tag.
Excuse me, please, thank you, sir. And so if that happens, it's not saying we're gonna do or looking for a problem, we wanna look for things that are correct and we can sing to the top of the mounds for that. But to say that, you know, we're looking for a problem, there are some departments that have not had an internal efficiency review for a long time. And I think that's due. What if it does come back, say, okay, you need X amount of people? That's a matrix that I can present to the public that says, I have an independent consultation that says, under the parameters of oversight and the company we select through the procurement plan, that is award-winning. I mean, we have a matrix of somebody that tells us good or bad. With the general accounting process and regulations for state and federal audits, they are prescribed a certain parameter. These will be someone's, just to say, let me pick on somebody, forgive me, EMS. We want someone that's EMS-focused that goes say, tell us why we're losing three or four million dollars a year on ambulatory service. Tell me why, how we can do this better. We wanna know that for the money that we can save is well worth that half a million dollars of investment and the people will know that we're looking for that.
Thank you. Counselor Seaman.
Mr. Chairman, just curious if any other counties in our state have done this and if so, what did they spend and what was the result?
Based on the, the, when I did look it up, they, it's anywhere between two hundred and twenty-five thousand and five hundred thousand dollars in it, cause it goes department by department, so it's not an overall audit.
But other counties in the state have done it?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you right now which ones they are, but they, there are some that do them. And that's another question I, I was gonna ask as well is just this particular kind of review that Counselor Long's talking about, when is the last time Greenville County has had something like that done? How many years ago?
Actually, uh, I don't recall one being done in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two years. However, our budget staff has gone through many of the departments over the years continuously looking for efficiencies, uh, and identifying some areas where we can cut and move and things like that, which we've done. We've also, also done it a number of times through the budget process where we've identified programs and, and opportunities where we can shift some emphasis. Uh, we have had EMS looked at over the years. Uh, we've had consultants come in and, um, if you recall, we actually, uh, worked on, uh, actually transitioning EMS to the hospital system years ago, which would've saved the county a significant amount of money and that was, uh, rejected at the time. And so, uh, that savings did not occur. So there has been a number of efforts over the years to accomplish exactly what is being proposed here. And, uh, we've met, met with some success and some not-so-successful times.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else? Dr. Shaw?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I, I don't think we should just focus on the performance of employees also. Um, I would think that this is broader into the performance of our real estate holdings. But mainly, what I was interested in is, you know, through the, the committee that we had, the oversight committee is, we, we asked the auditor about first, our particular audit and, and what our state requires and he said it's bare bones. And then I said, what about comparing it to other states? He said, South Carolina is basically a joke compared to other states. Um, and that he recommended some, now, of course, he might be selling for his audit company, who knows? But, um, for instance, you know, are we getting enough grants that we're supposed to get? Are we getting all the grants? And, and, and this is no, uh, you know, slight as what we're doing, cause you, you, you know, the correct, uh, position is here, we, we are a lean county. And, um, the other point I had was, I, I believe Pickens just did one, we could, uh, that, they, they, Pickens County just had done one of these. And that, the main point is when we budget something here, it's having the confidence to know that what we budgeted for is actually spent on that. And that's where getting information leading up to these budgets is so difficult, trying to figure out for anybody, for me, for, for our other councils, I've heard, even the public, trying to figure out, okay, we budgeted for it, we're not hemorrhaging money, there's not, money's not being stolen or anything, but it's, you know, we budgeted for this, how is it being spent? It's extremely difficult to get how the money's actually been spent. Last, um, where do we find in this budget that the administration office has the ability to basically call an audible for, is it four hundred thousand now? I mean, so when there's an audible called, we budgeted for something and there's an audible called, oh, it goes four hundred thousand for something else, you know? Those kind of things are, are what I'd like to see, um, be able to track those a little better.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to renew my motion.
Call the motion, please.
Does everybody understand the motion that Counselor Tripp has made?
Please restate the motion.
I'd like to amend Ms. Long's amendment to, and take that five hundred thousand dollars and send it back to the taxpayers in the form of millage reduction.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Mr. Chairman, you have two in favor, ten opposed.
Thank you. That motion is denied. Now the motion that is on the floor currently, does everybody understand the motion?
Roll call, please.
Restate it again.
Counselor Long?
It's her?
Yep.
Gotcha, don't worry about it. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
The amendment is to provide funding for a performance review of Greenville County operations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight in favor, four opposed.
All right, thank you, the motion passes. We'll move to the next, which is amendment four, Counselor McGahey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I moved to amend, and moved to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget so the public safety receives a six percent increase for those making under the AMI. Everyone above this level receives the standard three percent. Anyone making over a hundred and thirty-five thousand receives no raise, which is a hundred percent of, fifty percent of AMI. Currently, Greenville SCMI is eighty-nine thousand. If we actually use U.S. Census numbers from 2020, it would be lower, but we'll go with that higher number. I moved to remove the new deputy slots for the sheriff's office, which, which has already been done by Counselor Russo's amendment. I moved that the GADC monies returned to the county go toward the public safety raises, which I believe is, is correct, seven hundred and fifty, that's in there. And I moved to provide county employees with a three percent increase. Anyone making over a hundred and thirty-five, which is the AMI, makes no raise. Under the general fund, we'll increase the transfer in for the infrastructure bank of one million point zero nine three, increase in other revenue to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from GADC, increase in salary and benefits, which EMS will be five hundred and thousand two hundred and ninety-one, increase salaries and benefits for public safety, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-four, increase salaries and benefits for the sheriff's office and the coroner's office, seven hundred and eighteen, three hundred and four. That's net of the deputy twelve positions, so that twelve positions, the funding for that is, that's where that will go. And here's, here's where it is. Reduce expenditures for administrative services by thirty-two point three thousand. Reduce expenditures for Department of General Services, eleven point three thousand. Reduce expenditures for Department of Public Works, eleven thousand, eleven point seven thousand. Reduce expenditures for elected and appointed officials judicial, twenty-nine point six thousand. Reduce expenditures for elected and appointed officials fiscal, seventeen point four thousand. Under the Parks Recreation Tourism Fund, reduce expenditures for salary and benefits, seventeen thousand five hundred and five. Under the Medical Charities Fund, reduce expenditures for salaries and benefits for fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifteen. Under the Stormwater Fund, reduce expenditures for salaries and benefits of five thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. Under the Infrastructure Bank Fund, we're gonna increase the transfer out to the general fund of one point zero nine three million and we reduce the transfer out to the road program of one point oh nine three. This is where we're taking the one point nine three million from roads. Under the road program, we'll reduce the transfer in for the infrastructure bank of one point zero nine three and we'll reduce the design-build contract, one point oh nine three. Just talk about this real quick is, uh, you know, I, I'm all for the public raises, you know, I, I feel bad that me and Counselor Russo disagree a little bit on, on the principle of it and I'm, and I'm not against, I'm, I'm not saying the deputies are rich, I'm not saying the police are rich, I'm not saying the firemen are rich. What I am saying is though, at some point, the county has to say, if you make that much money, that's enough money for you to live on. This is ridiculous, the, the way we're gonna spend taxpayer money. And sometimes I feel like, you know, I'm the only person in the county that wants to save the taxpayer monies. I know some of my friends do too and I'm not saying they don't, but, you know, when I walk in the grocery store now, people stop me and say, thank you for trying to save some money. And it's, it's unbelievable that we have people up here that call themselves Republicans and they wanna increase taxes. I mean, there, there's a time for that, but we're not in that time. The, the fiscal responsibility of the county, we're in good shape, but that doesn't mean we need to spend more money and put lavish raises on people making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's just not where we need to go. So, you know, while I'm sympathetic to what Counselor Russo puts in and I agree with that, I think if, uh, with this amendment, if you make a hundred and fifty percent of AMI, you don't get a raise. If you make between that and AMI, you get three percent. And I think that's fair for everybody.
Thank you. Counselor Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a couple of things. I mean, I'm gonna start with, our, our people are our biggest resource. The county, and I have said this before, we are public-facing. We rely on our employees to serve the public every day. And if we wanna talk about being more effective and efficient, one of the ways we're gonna do that is to continue to recruit and retain the best people we can. And one of the ways that we can do that is by rewarding them through a good working environment, training, but also what we pay them. And for our people who make more than a hundred and thirty-five thousand, some of that is because they have responsibilities to supervise people, to train people and to manage people. It's, it's not because they are rich, it's not, but we're gonna penalize the people, some of our top performers, if we just say that if you, if you hit a certain amount, there's no more for you. There is no way that we're gonna continue to retain the best people for this county and do all the other things we wanna do, be more efficient, be more effective, use better technology. The way we're gonna do that is through our people and I just, I, I can't support your amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, if I may?
Rick McGahey.
Mr. Administrator, do you know how many people we've lost making over a hundred grand that complained the salary was the reason? I mean, just in general number, would you say, is that, is that a common thing, we lose people to county because I, I'm not making enough money at the hundred-plus level?
I can't answer that.
It's fair, that's fair.
Anybody else?
I have a question. Mr. Chairman, just, uh, just wanna make sure that everybody understands that because Mr. Russo's amendment was adopted and this isn't a motion to amend it, because you can't amend an adopted motion, uh, I, I mean, an adopted amendment, that if this passes, that's gone. His, Russo's will be gone.
Well, that makes this even much easier.
Everybody understand the motion? Or understand?
You said if we, if we pass Mr. McGahey's motion, that Mr. Russo's is gone.
Right, because, because it's, uh, cause they address same subject matter just differently. Uh, but it will, that will be, whichever one's, the last one will be the one that, that rules the day on that.
I would just like to say, no, I'd just like to say again, please, real quick, is, I'm all about-
You know what's funny, Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick? These two, when you were chairman, you enforced the rules like a dictator. Now you're sitting over here like this, be quiet, Dan.
Let, let me, let me, well, here, let, let-
Be quiet.
Let me, let me bring this back to order again and say that tip-
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, one second. Typically, I would try to keep it in order, but there's a lot of really emotional things going on that require a little more time. I don't think any citizens other than the ones that look sleepy like me or, or, or have a problem with that. So, um, I would like to use my power to allow the debate to continue unless somebody wants to appeal that.
No, I, I don't wanna appeal it, I just question the rules, which when you call the question-
It's non-debatable.
It's not debatable.
It's not up to chairman's discretion. Once the question is called, you gotta move. I know you might wanna hear him, but once we call the question-
It's not a matter of hearing him, I would hear you the same way.
He's the chair, he can change, he has the ability to change the rules however he wants. Don't you guys forget that.
Attorney, is, is that correct? Then we can move forward with the question.
He is allowed, he is allowed under Mason's rules to change the orders however he wants. It's in our rules.
The, um, when the question is called, there is not a non-debatable under the rules. Um, we do have a catch-all as for whether or not it's deemed to be in order in your rules is whether the chair rules it in order, but to be sure, the, under our rules and under the rules we follow, is not, it's one of the few non-debatable ones. But again, ultimately, decision of whether something's in order is up to the chairman to decide.
Okay, and I'm gonna continue because the reason that I didn't call the question is that not everybody's addressing the chair and they're just talking over me and each other, so I heard that, that being called while somebody was speaking, so I'm gonna say that he can continue. Go ahead.
This, this isn't about not, not paying people, this is about targeting the people that need it the most. And everybody in this crowd earlier was talking about how much we need affordable housing and all these things. Well, how about we target these people that you say that workforce housing is for and give them a good raise? The people that make a hundred plus a year don't need a, a six percent raise, they're not, they're not looking for housing, they're not homeless. All right, that's my point here is that we, we can't just, you know, we can't just paint the whole county or everybody with a broad brush. We need to, we need to be more scapula, with a scapula how we're doing raises now. We can't just be giving out money because we, we feel like giving out money.
Thank you. Counselor Russo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think I will say, you know, I, I know we asked Mr. Administrator how many people we're losing for pay. I mean, I, I, I feel like it's probably a decent amount of people. Uh, echo what Ms. Seaman said. These people that, that do make over a hundred K a year, they have massive responsibilities, especially when it comes to public safety, they're supervisors, they're people that are working overtime for free, they're on-call twenty-four seven, uh, they deserve a raise. And I'll call, if I can, let's just go ahead and roll call this.
All right. Roll call has been requested.
Mr. Chairman, you have three in favor, nine in opposition.
All right, thank you, the motion fails. We'll move to amendment five. This will be Counselor Shaw.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, starting off with number one, uh, this, this has to do with the, um, the exact same thing Councilman Russo was discussing. Before I get into that, let me just make a brief statement about the, the predicate of all forty-four of these, which was that I, they were all predicated upon us passing Ms. Long's performance audit. So that's been passed, so, um, I would've probably withdrawn a lot of these or all of them if that weren't the case. That being said, um, priorities, first of all, the taxpayer, those, those are our bosses. I know y'all have a lot of bosses and you're, we're your, or you're our bosses also, but, um, you know, first and foremost, the taxpayer. They've told us public safety and roads. So what I've tried to do is the exact same thing Counselor Russo proposed, but how do you pay for that? And I tried to find some reductions just based on my experience, uh, based on talking to some people, some, some anecdotal and then just some conservative philosophy. So are any of these perfect? Do I know all the answers? No. Are we gonna get more from this audit? Or yes, we will. It'd be a lot easier next time after we get an audit. Um, okay, so number one, I do not want to, I, passing it would, would, would nullify Mr. Russo, so, um, I am going to withdraw number one. to withdraw number one. This goes onto a general theme. Number two would be that, and to his credit, Mr. Cornell has already addressed overtime. I noticed through going through the budget numbers that overtime, not for the deputies, but for a lot of other agencies, there was some big overtime numbers. And Mr. Cornell explained that he actually added two positions, I think it was to forensics, to bring down that number of overtime. So, a lot of these amendments just have to do with eliminating overtime. So, one is, the first one would be, oh, the other thing I want to say is, my day job is seeing everybody here at the county. Most of my practice is probate, we have to do with probate. So, I have to go to those desks, to the same people that we're dealing with, raises and everything here, not only probate, but registered deeds. I'm there every day. So, I've heard from all of them about the difference between law enforcement and other county employees. It would, they'd be a lot nicer to me if I would, if everybody got six percent. So, you know, I have to see those every day. When we come here, we have to see the ladies in the clerk's office, they've already given me a little bit of their opinions about some of this stuff. Not only that, the judges, all the magistrates, and the clerk of court. I'm dealing with these people every day. So, I wanted at least the people to keep in mind that I'm not just looking to cut a bunch of money, I've had to really try to see where maybe we could squeeze some more out of this orange. So, anyway, Amendment Two is just removing forty-five hundred dollars a year in overtime from basically council and clerk of council, and I move that you would approve it.
Counselor Tripp?
Mr. Shaw, do you understand that a big part of this overtime is because of our lengthy meetings?
Mr., you want to answer that one, Mr. Collins? Or you want me to?
I think I give the floor back to you, Dr. Shaw.
Want to chime in?
Okay. Mr. Administrator?
I understand that. Yes, I do. If we have, you know, being honest here, if we have four people in an office, the hours of work hours can be covered, and they could be flexible, so that the people who would get overtime just come in later. Is that possible, or all those daytime hours have to be worked, and then they have to do, all of them have to do overtime, or some have to do overtime? That's a legitimate question.
Mr. Shaw, members of council, you have done this on a number of the department budgets with the overtime. My concern would be, of course, meetings like this, because meetings go different lengths of time and everything. It's not like people are just sitting here during the day not working. So, when they go to a council meeting, that's additional work, and so if you would rather not have clerk people, you know, signing up people and all that, that's fine, we can cut that. You do have IT in here. IT's called out on weekends, at nights, anytime. We have twenty-four seven coverage for public safety and everything. If you're not concerned about streaming the meetings and things like that, that's fine, you can also cut that. You can go down this list. Animal care, we get called out regularly for things like that. Public works, my goodness, we just had a hurricane, you know how much time we spent after hours on weekends because you all call us and have problems with tree limbs on county roads and everything? That will go away. So, when people call, the response will be, "Thank you, call us Monday when we can get to it." I don't think we want that. That's not the way we operate. All these things that you've gone through, forensics, you know, I don't think crime is going to pay attention to whether you want to pay for overtime or not.
Well, that's the one you fixed, though, isn't it? You added two new positions. You fixed that.
But we still get called out if there's a big event that occurs. You know, I can't guarantee we won't have it. You know, public safety, we get called, we have to go.
Right, and I-
And I have to pay our people when they go.
Understood, understood.
It's not, you know, it's not at your discretion. If you want to cut back some of the public services that we provide to our residents, tell us that, and we'll fashion something to accomplish that. But just going through and cutting all these different things, it doesn't work.
Do I have your commitment that you will review all of these and try to find positions so that we don't have to do overtime?
Find positions? What do you mean?
Oh, just like you did with forensics. You did that already, you fixed it.
Right, right.
Do that for all of them.
Some areas are more difficult. For instance, look at the Sheriff's Department EMS, their budgets, they have built-in overtime.
And I wasn't including them in here.
I understand that, but they have built-in overtime, and so it's automatic because of the shift work, thirty-six hours, forty-eight hours. Weeks they work forty-eight, they're going to get paid the extra eight hours. The challenge we have, if you look down through here, we're talking, take out solid waste, because solid waste is a separate operation that actually charges user fees to pay for itself. So, you're basically talking two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars for all public works, a number of the public safety, emergency management, for instance, fifteen thousand dollars. Those poor people worked hundreds and hundreds of overtime hours when we had the emergencies.
I didn't think I included that in there.
You did.
Well, we're giving them the six percent raise, and we did give them that, and we're, I didn't see that in EMS, but-
Actually, the emergency management does not get the six percent raise, they're not the-
I thought that was-
They're not certified officers.
Well, what, we need to clarify then what Joey's raise is, because-
Not emergency management, it's all the other-
Oh, emergency management, I'm sorry, not EMS, I'm sorry.
EMS is covered, their paramedics are EMTs.
Okay, understood, understood. Just looking for ways, you know, the taxpayer-
Yeah, no, and so are we. We're constantly looking and monitoring it, and you can ask a number of the departments what kind of phone calls they get from us when we see their payroll for that last few week period, and if they have a lot of overtime, it's questioned heavily. And we put some safeguards in place so that we can try to prevent it. It's not just people decide to work extra, it's bona fide reasons, and we can show you the reasons.
I mean, growing up, I, you know, my relatives and everything always wanted that time and a half, and, you know, it is more work, and so, but it's juicy, juicy work, isn't it, when you're getting more? The, okay, so let's get rid of, well, let's do a vote on Amendment Two. That would be just a simple overtime of basically our clerks and council, just for movement, it's just not that much, forty-five hundred dollars. Take a vote on that, and based on that, I may get us out of here earlier.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, and to address Dr. Shaw's question with the clerk, we do have the four clerks, assistant clerk, and another two. It seems a little more manageable or feasible, I've been asked many times, why is it that there's no flex time or rotational time? And I understand overtime, some things happen, you can't do it, I get it. But, you know, to say that two can't, you know, come in and do, and I understand they do different things, but I think that would be just a legitimate concern or objective, just to look at.
Well, and I would, I would agree with you, it doesn't hurt to look at it. I would talk to the clerk, you guys deal with her all day long, and see, you know, about her staffing levels and everything. Normally, they've had three, three and a half people in there at any given time, just depending on what's going on. What I can say is, this council's a little more active than what we've been in the past at some with meetings, and the number of meetings, and the length of meetings. And so, I think you're seeing more use of them for different things, overtime and special projects and things like that. So, that's something we can have discussions about.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some questions for the administrator and for Dr. Shaw. Dr. Shaw, is this removal of overtime just like a fraction of the overtime that's allotted, or is this like all of the overtime?
Councilman Farmer, that is what I saw budgeted for this year. So, I just, I just put it as, you know, that number I got, that's what's budgeted for overtime for the clerk's office this year. And by the way, I love the clerk's office, I love those ladies there. I mean, that's the problem, we're friends with these people. Mr. Administrator, it's hard for us to go, you know, we got to, it's not easy for us to do this stuff, and it's probably not easy for you either. They do a good job, but can we rearrange all over the county to make some adjustments like this, so it's just more salary than overtime?
Okay, so it is eliminating overtime for these employees?
For this year, this is a one-year budget, right? So, it'd be for this year.
Mr. Attorney, is that legal? Can, does that violate labor laws regarding overtime? That seems like something we should know.
No, I mean, you can, just like any other employer, you can ask your employee to leave at a certain point when they reach the number of hours without doing overtime.
Mr. Administrator, have we used all of our overtime ever? And I'm going to give you some grace excluding the hurricane.
Normally, the areas that we are always challenged on are EMS, detention, and sheriff's office, and that's due to a lot of reasons. Staffing, having full staff, because if we don't have full staff for incidents in detention, it's overtime. We have to have bodies there. And so, same way with sheriff's office and EMS. So, besides those, we don't always use it, no. It's not, it's not there to use unless we need it, absolutely need it.
Right. Okay, and so if we don't use it, where's it go? Back to the general fund?
It stays in the general fund like any other unspent expenditure, it just goes to fund malice at the end of the year.
Well, I have a lot of faith in this, but I'll give it a whirl. I'm going to motion that we deny all the amendments that delete overtime.
I mean, what, I will tell you, depend, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I can withdraw them all if, depending upon the results of this vote. I think procedurally, that's better, right?
Let's hurry up and give it to them.
So, Council Farmer, you okay with us entertaining this one to see what happens after that?
Sure.
Okay. Roll call has, roll call's also been announced as well. Everybody understand the motion?
This is to reduce, remove overtime for everybody, basically for-
Just of the county council and clerk of council.
Correct. But symbolically, it's for all of it.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, you have two in favor, ten in opposition.
All right, thank you. So, moving to Amendment Three, Counselor Shaw, Dr. Shaw.
Okay, Amendment Three does not contain overtime. This gets to Counselor McGehee's point about putting percentage increase on already high salaries. The ones I've identified, total, it's about three employees, it totaled about five hundred and twenty thousand, one-seventy-five a year, one-seventy-five a year, one-seventy a year, save the taxpayer about fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars if they, if we approve this amendment and just keep those salaries flat for one year. Again, a lot of this is based upon anecdotal, this is voters telling me things, it's, it's all kinds of information. I'm not saying I'm an expert at this by any means.
Mr. Administrator?
Oh, no, no, I mean, you want to allow the administrator answer that, or?
No, I have a question.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I thought you were finished.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
You still, are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay, okay. Looking through these with the assistant administrators, the only question I had was, is this, are all these covered under the same department? Because I couldn't find where, I think only one was budgeted from the administrator office.
You are correct. These, I'm not sure, he pulled these from other budgets, it's not part of the administration budget. One would be in public works, one would be in detention, and the other one's in administration.
Which one's in administration out of those three?
The one-seventy-five, the first one-seventy-five, I guess.
So, just a question, I guess, for Dr. Shaw and for Legal, was if those are not covered under that department, will we technically only be voting on the one position?
Mr. Administrator, who is our government relations person?
That person is Bob Maholic.
Got it.
Now, that's not part of what I was just answering, he's not an assistant administrator. That's a position that has been around for quite some time. In fact, county council created that position many, many years ago.
Right.
He does a lot of the media work that you see here for all the meetings and everything. He's the one that's behind the scenes, that coordinates all that, and makes sure we do it right, we get things posted. He does a lot of the website development for all the departments, you know, if you've seen the animal care campaigns we've been very successful with, that's his. He's done a lot of the EMS recruitment-type brochures and everything. And quite frankly, I'm very confused why this would even be here. Just, Mr. Shaw actually just brought a friend of his up to me, maybe a month ago, a lady that was being laid off from her job.
Well, that's not appropriate to bring that up. I mean, it's just, the job was filled by, you created a new job, and that was filled by-
I did not have, I did not-
You created a social media job for fifty-five thousand bucks.
No, we already had that, that was already there. Maddie's been there for quite some time.
Well, that's what, no, that's not appropriate. What I was bringing her for was council would have their own spokesperson, like the school board has, because we have nobody speaking for us.
Mr. Maholic does.
He does not.
If it's county business, not individuals.
So, that's just, that's just really inappropriate and crappy, really, that's bad to do that.
Let me bring this back to the question, and I'll get to Counselor Seaman and Counselor Tripp. The question I had asked, I never did get answered, which, is this amendment, as it's currently written, even a legal amendment that we could vote on, since some of the people are not in the department in question?
As written, sorry, it's written, it's probably fine, it would be, it would be better to put them out in their own individual departments, but they all do. But we, yeah, I mean, I think if you're doing it like this, it's not going to create a problem if that's what you want to do.
Counselor Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question even about our ability to discontinue a job. I mean, as council, we have three employees, so are we, can we even do that?
You do raise kind of a question where this starts falling into a gray area, because you have the county administrator council form of government, which does give the authority as to hiring and firing individual employees to the county administrator. And, you know, we haven't ever encountered this before, so my office would need to do some research on the issue of whether or not, and I just don't have a good answer for you on that, and I'm not saying it does, I'm saying it doesn't, it's an issue, though, and if you took a budget and targeted a particular person's position, whether or not that needs to be looked at legally as a, as whether or not that's in compliance or not with state law. I'm not giving an opinion either way, I'm saying that what you pointed out is kind of a gray area that we don't know the answer to.
Can I just do a quick follow-up? So, I guess my other just general comment on all of this, and I think to your point, Dr. Shaw, when you talked about in the beginning of the conversation, that since we did pass the performance audit, to me, council would be better served waiting to see some results, and even we perhaps could ask the firm that we hired to specifically, like, look at things like overtime, looking at different staffing models, might be a more appropriate way for us to, I don't know, as opposed to just, you know, sort of cutting just on this budget, I would much rather wait and see the results, and if there are things that we need to address from that perspective, I think it just would be a much more efficient way to handle what the concerns are in terms of changing FTEs and other things that we might be told otherwise when we get the audit back.
That's a good point, and I don't disagree with that. Again, all I was trying to do is, whatever we've done with Mr. Russo's- to do is whatever we've done with Mr. Russo's is coming out of roads. So I was trying to save the taxpayer money instead of biting into roads for all that, is to find other possible areas. But I am not digging my heels on, on any of this type of thing.
All right, I think Counselor Tripp may be next.
Question for the administrator, is the government relations position in the administration?
Yes, sir.
I, I just, Mr. Shaw, I just, I mean, the substance of your amendment is about not giving these highly paid assistant administrators 3% raises, correct?
Yes, exactly. With the exception of public relations, which would be eliminate that.
Well, I, and what I'm saying is that's not germane to the notion of giving 3% raises. So, you know, I feel like we need to split the question or pull it out or something. It's not germane to the amendment.
Which one?
It's two different subjects.
That's fine, just, um, drop, we're dropping all this, well, I don't see why it can't be part of the same amendment. They're, but they're listed, where I got this information was a sheet of what people get paid. And they were called assistant administrators. Well, okay, does that mean they're in administration or that they're head of some other department? I don't know. Does it really matter? Let's just vote on this principle here. And if, if we don't, you know, I don't need to make this a all-nighter based on this, on rhetoric.
I, I, I'm not trying to argue with you. It's just non-germane. So I, I mean, I, I mean, let's vote on it. But either that or let's split the question and vote on the 3% raises on one hand and, and the firing of our government relations position on the other.
Mr. Chairman, may I make an amendment to the amendment, please? Make an amendment to, to strike, to strike discontinued government relations position. Strike that from the amendment, please.
All right, everybody understand the motion?
Your amendment is to strike the administrator's public relations guy? Is that what you're saying?
Strike, strike from your amendment, the discontinued government relations position. Strike that from your amendment.
Okay, are you splitting them up or just getting rid of that?
Getting rid of that one for now.
Okay. That's your amendment? Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just one, just one comment. There's been many counties I've looked at, and I'm not saying all of them, not saying a few of them, but there are some that salaried employees do not get overtime. And I'll just state that.
Thank you. So back to Counselor McGahey's amendment, which would remove the discontinuation of the government relations position. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. So now we have the amendment minus the government relations position.
Call the question. Call the question.
Somebody call roll call?
Roll call, please.
Roll call's been requested. They're asking to restate the motion.
Oh, this would be to just a 0% increase for this year for three positions, three assistant administrators. Doing a great job, but the public's worried about the money we're spending.
The whole year. The whole year.
You have three in favor, nine in opposition.
The motion fails. We will move to Amendment Four.
Withdraw.
Amendment Four withdrawn. We will move to Amendment Five. Question, withdraw from that as well. Six?
Withdraw.
Amendment Six withdrawn. Amendment Seven?
Withdraw.
Amendment Seven withdrawn. Amendment Eight?
Withdraw.
Withdrawn?
Can, can I move to the one that really, I'm just saying the same thing for, for a lot of these?
You want to state which those, which amendments you'd like to strike?
Yeah, let's strike, um-
We're at nine currently.
Nine through. Okay, nine through twen-, uh, thirty-three, nine through thirty-three, move to strike.
So we are removing Amendments Nine through Thirty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Here on to Amendment Thirty-four.
Number Thirty-four and Thirty-five are companion. I think they're duplicates. The motion would be to remove 3 million a year spending on Greenville Transit Authority, leave it at 500,000, and it must be allocated to paratransit only. That would protect our most vulnerable, and that would give them or keep an option for them. And further, I don't know how this all works with federal funding or whatever, but the system's not working for Greenville. The solution that keeps coming before us by its advocates is, well, it's not working because we don't give it more money. And they said that last time, and every, every time I've been on, it's the same thing. You just keep giving it more money, and it's gonna get better. The reason it doesn't work is because it doesn't, we don't keep giving it. Well, what, there's, it doesn't work. And we can take, the amount of money spent on that, which, by the way, we're spending twice as much as the city of Greenville, we could buy cars. We could buy the kind of car I had when I was, when my mom, single mom, was driving us three around in a Volkswagen Bug. We could buy cars for everybody. And if you're paratransit, I'm, this would protect 500,000 to make sure they get where they need. Then we need private businesses to get in. A couple of years ago, we had somebody from BMW, now that we're calling out names, the employee came in and complained to us that, that he can't get to BMW. And one of the council members was supposed to go talk to BMW and present all blah, blah, blah. But, I mean, the taxpayer's supposed to pay for this stuff? And, anyway.
All right. I want to start off with a question myself, just because I can't figure this out. But Dr. Shaw, Thirty-four and Thirty-five, are they not the same amendment?
Yes, that's why, I think the clerk graciously saw that. I was making these at about 2:00 in the morning. And yes, they're, they're just duplicates, so.
So we can safely strike one of those?
Yeah, just strike Thirty-four, and we'll just be working on Thirty-five.
Okay. Their comments. Counselor Farmer?
Mr. Attorney, and I realize you may not be the right person to ask, but I'm gonna give it a shot. I understand Greenville Transit Authority, basically every single thing they have to do has to go through the state and the federal government. If we gave him this, or them this 500,000 that 100% must be, must go to paratransit, can we even do that?
That is something that my office would need to research. We, we don't even have a subject file on that. We, this would be new research for us.
Yeah. Because basically, all my conversations with them, they're like, well, we can't do this because it has to go all the way up the chain of command, which frustrates the HD double hockey sticks out of me. But, yeah.
I can, I can say that I did get an email from Mr. Earl, I believe, that, that did say that they, that the federal government does have certain requirements that they can't just simply allocate all of that funding just to paratransit. So that's, that's just what I was, I was sent, so.
And if, if I may just comment on that, that's, that is the problem, is that the federal government looks across the nation, everything's one size fits all. Our system needs to work like Chicago's, Washington DC. It worked, it worked okay in DC. I was just there yesterday. It didn't work that good in the city next door in Fairfax. Nobody's on them. They don't collect any fees because they don't have any collection system. It's just one size fits all. It doesn't work. It doesn't work.
Chair, if I may?
Counselor Collins?
The GTA representative, paratransit has to be assigned to a designated route. Okay? The designated route, the paratransit can only go three quarters miles from that route. But paratransit does go door-to-door on appointment, picks you up, takes you to where you want to go, waits on you, and brings you back. So one of the things that, that would be used for is in that category, category of paratransit. And I think that would go. But there is a federal transcript that says it has to be assigned to a designated route. And it does not work on the weekends if the route doesn't work. And that's just the federal guidelines of that. So, but I do know that GPAT's, GTA, Green Lake, did get a lot of federal grant money from the FTA, Federal Transportation Administration, through 5399, 5310 money. So, and I'm not sure the amounts, but a couple of them were pretty good. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So just, just for clarification, that 500,000, we can't tell them what to do with it?
That's the way it was explained to me, although I don't want to say from, from this position that that's 100% fact, but that's what I was told.
Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to clarify that the, the actual amendment is to take 3 million out of GTA and only leave them with the 500,000.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. And I am not putting any strings on that or what they do with it. If they think it's better for them working for the federal government, working with them, and they think that's working here, I disagree. Unless they're gonna get counsel to put 100 million dollars or something into that system, I say let them, if they are the ones that run transit, let them take 500,000 and let them spend it the way they see fit, not tied to a federal program.
I got a question, Mr. Shaw.
Dr. Fan.
Now, Shaw, what do you propose, that the 3 million dollars that you want to strip from GTA, what is this spent on?
Originally, that was gonna be for any of these other things that we were adding, like raises and all that. I would give it back to the taxpayer as about a mil. Don't forget, we just went up seven mils a year and a half ago, two years ago. So, not that I hate anybody, not that I'm mad at anybody, it's just logically, look at this. Does anybody out there looking at these buses, other than the people who do ride it, right? Which, and you laugh at that. You laugh at that, and it's probably, no, you laugh at that, but we literally could buy them cars with the amount of money between us and Greenville. Yes, we could. Yeah, no, it's not.
Can we call a question?
Who, who, we're getting, we heard him.
Question's been called. Been requested.
Mr. Chairman, you have three in favor, nine in opposition.
Thank you. Next, next amendment, Dr. Shaw's amendment Thirty-six.
Some duplication here. Let's just see. I think Thirty-eight, you can, you can remove Thirty-eight. It's the same one that just, uh-
Or, actually, if you want to go back, I think Thirty-six and Thirty-seven may be duplicates.
Right, 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 right. That's what I was saying. I was just looking ahead.
So you want to move to Thirty-seven?
No, move to Thirty-six.
Okay.
All right. This is one where we really need to help our kids. This is, remember, the Natural Historic and Natural Resources Trust was created out of thin air about two years ago. I was getting, I got calls from Governor Riley and other prominent Democrats to start that. And in the end, I voted to authorize it. Well, right now, from all accounts, the best we can do without an audit is anywhere between, I've heard, 2.4 million to 1.4 million in the bank for them right now. Remember, we gave them zero about two years ago, because it was created out of thin air. So now they have banked up about whatever amount that is, a million and a half, whatever. This budget would give them another million that they can't, you know, to put it blunt, they can't spend it fast enough. What they're trying to do, which I agree with a lot of that, is preserve irreplaceable places in the county, preserve the land.
Yeah, good dad.
What I'm trying to do here is get us to realize that kids and their youth, their development, that time is irreplaceable. I would even argue more than land. Because we know with land, eventually it'll get back, just like the bleachery and all that. It takes time. But kids' lives, kids growing up, there's time with sports. You can't replace that time. You can't replace the parent time with them. We can immediately make an impact in our youth by allocating that 1 million dollars. It's not gonna hurt the trust at all, right now, to build a year-round fields at West Side Park, which will, which will help a lot of y'all, help all of us. It will double the capacity on the north and the west side of our county for kids to be able to play rectangular field sports. And there's quite a few of them. It's not just soccer. So what I'm asking is, is, is take the million dollars allocated for the trust for this one year, and put it to those fields that we can get these kids, fields that they can play on.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll start with a question, just because I, as another area that I'm just unclear on how the money moves to be safe. But if we were to do this, then I believe what Dr. Shaw's requesting is for the money to go to Parks and Rec, I guess, would be the case. And what would that do to our, the county budget, as far as the fund balance or the, can, can we, can we send money that way?
Yes, this is a separate fund. And actually, what Mr. Shaw referred to is, they actually came up with another piece of property to purchase. That's why they're down to about 1.4 million of fund balance. And they are, in the current budget, have another million coming this coming year. So, but it can be moved, if that's what council chooses.
So they already have money allocated for fields? Is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to get clarification.
No, no. We do, well, we do actually have money allocated to do a turf field at Hertz Claus Park in the coming year. But that is not related to this, quite frankly.
Okay.
This would be open to all kids, 25, all y'all, Allen, all y'all's on our side of town now, okay? They all need a place to play, to learn.
I'd get you if it wasn't so late. Can I ask a question?
Mr. Shaw?
No.
I'm sorry, Dr. Fan, the other doctor.
Mr. Cornell, doesn't Parks and Rec have their own millage?
They do.
And from the presentation they did a few months ago, not only do they do an outstanding job with their millage, they usually have a surplus every year that they carry over. So they don't really need any money from us?
Point of order. I mean, that's, to say they need or don't need money, that's not at his discretion.
Not a point of order. That's an opinion.
All right.
And, and they're like, you know what, Dan?
Dr. Fan?
I'm, I'm, I just, I just want, I wanted to be clear that they did have their own millage, and they do do a, they run a very tight ship. They do a great job. And they actually have a, a, a capital fund that they carry over each year. So I don't see the point of meddling with them.
Well, the kid, the kid, the kids in your area are good. They got all they need. They, they got all they need.
I'm gonna-
I tell you what, can we call a question? I'm gonna show you exactly what I think and what you're talking about.
I was, I was in the process of getting to Counselor Tripp. Let me go to him.
I just, I just find it ironic that you're gonna take a fund that benefits all of Greenville County. If you look at what HNRT, they have literally preserved green space all over this county, and you're gonna put it into one park that doesn't represent the whole county? I mean, and, and in addition to that, you're doing, you're transferring this question for the administrator, are they doing new fields with this? Or they, what, what exactly are they doing with this? Because it sounds to me like you're using one-time money for a reoccurring expense, which is a big no-no when it comes to budgets.
I don't know what this is being used for, quite frankly.
Okay.
Okay, let's go back so we don't get mischaracterized here. In this current budget, they're already doing it at her- In this current budget, they're already doing it at Hurts Clots Park. We have a severe lack of fields on our side of, see, say, in your area, hey, they got all they want, plus the parents here have to get in their cars and drive in all the traffic, get in wrecks, hit the potholes that y'all talk about and everything.
That you wouldn't fix.
Well, I'll fix them with our, we're raising 36 million this year, aren't we? Okay. What would be is another field come online at the same time at, at Westside Park, which benefits, the capacity is too low on our side, on this side, on the northern, western side, for these kids to do the type of things that bring the money, the tournaments, and all these tournaments bring a lot of money to the ATAX and HTAX, they bring parents here, they give the kids, remember, irreplaceable, you can't replace those times. If they're not, if they can't get on a field, that time's gone forever. But that's what it is, it's just duplicating what we're doing at Hurts Clots. It's already been said by Parks and Recs, they can do this, and we, it's much cheaper to do it now while we're already doing one, to do two at the same time than one. There will be turf fields, too, that, which don't have the maintenance, I don't know all that, but that they say, you know, it's, it's the way to go these days.
Dr. Shaw, have we, it's just, I'm getting, I'm having questions as I'm looking out in the crowd and seeing people that work there, but have, have they gave any input as to whether they had monies set aside for projects there for this coming year?
Who's they?
The Parks and Rec.
I've never heard any department say they don't have enough money.
No, I meant, is there anything, have we, have we consulted with them prior to this amendment being presented?
Yes, the people who run these soccer programs have, have consulted with them, to my understanding. And, I mean, it's pretty simple, you either, you know, you put a park, there's more capacity. You put more fields, there's more capacity. And if there's resistance by a certain department, well, then, we've got parents saying, well, that department's not doing enough, we don't have enough ball fields for our kids. Y'all are doing everything else, but you're not giving our kids a place to, to play.
Right.
A legitimate place to play.
And just so you know, I'm, I'm not arguing with you, I'm actually just trying to figure out if Parks and Rec may have a plan in place to address what we have, and if, if that's the case, then maybe they already have money allocated.
Not to replace this, they're doing Hurts Clots, thankfully, and Hurts Clots has made tremendous progress. But, look, hey, if they can't do it there, we'll figure out a place to do it, let's just get them the money. Yes, the trust is good, it's preserving land, but most people can't use those lands, you can walk on them a little bit, they're preserved, those are preserved lands, you can't play ball, kids need places to play ball, and you can't do that on a bunch, whatever that plant is and all that stuff. There's no, these are out in the, most of the northern part of the county, that are mountains, that are trees, that are owls, birds, waterfalls, you can't bring a bunch of people to play ball, we don't have that stuff.
Right, thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, the, the amount we have for Hurts Clots is 1.4 million. Mr. Shaw, if you recall, you were in the meeting.
Yeah.
That's for one field. The soccer club's supposed to be raising the other 1.4 million, so we can do two. But that is the going rate for a turf field.
And, and, let's not, the overriding thing is, the trust has money, they have money, they have more than they're asking for right now. Let's regulate them a little and say, hey, y'all can't even spend this fast enough, really, to be honest. It's not, if they could have, they would have, but they can't. You can't do those conservation easements that fast.
Anybody else?
I, I just, I think it's short-sighted to, you know, with a county that's growing as fast as we are, and as good a job as H and RT did, you know, I think it was, what, 7, 8, 9 dollars they brought in for every dollar we invested in them? I mean, and, and to take that countywide resource and put it into one, one field that's going to, that's going to, we've been picking on rich people, so rich people on the northern side of the county.
It's in Berea.
You know, whatever, I mean, the point is, you're, you're, you're taking it out of everybody's pocket and putting it into a small number of people in the county, and I just think that's, and you're using one-time money for a recurring, for a field that's going to have recurring maintenance needs. And I, what are we going to do next year when you don't get the extra dollars to maintain it?
CISA out on your side makes a tremendous amount of ATAX and HTAX money, we will more than recoup that, we need to give the kickstart to these programs, it's not just soccer, it's lacrosse, ladies' sports, all this stuff. Those things bring in a ton of money to the businesses, to the restaurants, to the hotels, and they, 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 it's easy to say that when you're out on the CISA side of town, because it's high times.
Not on the CISA side of town, I'm involved in, I'm involved.
Well, that's CISA, I mean, that's CISA. You know, so anyway.
If I may make a motion.
Help me out, guys, help me out.
Can we make a motion to call the question, please? I think, we're not changing anybody's vote, moving forward, please.
The only person I'm going to allow real quick is, is my, my vice chairman, because I completely forgot, and he has to be recognized real quick, and then we'll go there.
If I remember correctly, when Carlton Owens came and addressed the council, yes, there's money left, but they are pending sales. So most of that money, as I understand, is already spent, but we have not done the work to spend the money, it's just a matter of time when the, not all the 1.4 that's left, but majority of it's already spent. And I know we got six acres in Piedmont he bought when Helena left to the beach on Reddy River, oh, Slode River, so all that money sitting there is not just sitting there, it, it is spent.
The question has been called, so.
Roll call.
Roll call's been requested, I was waiting on that, too.
You have four in favor, eight opposed.
All right, thank you. The motion fails, we will move it out to amendment 40. These may be more overtime.
Yeah, that's a pullback.
Mr. Chair, if I may be, Mr., can we all take a five-minute, meet back at 5 o'clock and let everybody use the restroom, get a drink real quick, just a five-minute?
I think we're done with my amendments, just about. Oh, we do have the...
Got a lot to get through. Yeah, I'm just saying, if everybody, if the public's fine, okay, keep going, I'm fine.
Would anybody else like a pee break?
No, no, I want to get this over with.
Just for the record publicly, I said pee, pee break the other night, because I'm a father of three, so.
Oh, okay, I know what this one is.
There's a, there's a thunderstorm warning, so I think that, that, so, unless, all right, let's, let's continue on, Dr. Shaw.
To combine that with a pee, pee break joke is in the thunderstorm, that's a little... Okay, what are we on, 39? 38. That one's scratched, that one's a duplicate.
Okay.
Okay, I think this, this is the same old idea, but pulling from roads, it's not going to pass, so I'm going to pull it. Well, let's, number 37 is, give it back to the taxpayer, so that 1 million dollar going to Historic and Natural Resources Trust, give that back to the taxpayer as savings. Again, you know, it's duplicating work of nonprofits, it's something that is aspirational, that people want to give money to this, but it's not, one, it's not a core function of our government. Number two, it's been sold, this is again, the Historic and Natural Resources Trust, it's been sold as a, as a green space saving tool or something like that. Well, we've got much better, cheaper ways, like concurrency, that would really take a dent out of the green space issue, other than doing, duplicating these private easements that nonprofits already do, they've been doing it for years, I've used to work on them. So I ask that you take 1 million dollars from the Natural Resources Fund and give that back to the taxpayer. Amendment seven.
All right, so just to be clear, it's essentially the same as the prior, but it's, this one's just to send back to the taxpayers and reduce millage?
Right, instead of helping kids have a soccer field.
On the motion?
Call.
Call's requested.
I'm still waiting on you to vote with me on one thing in this lifetime.
You have three in favor, nine in opposition.
Motion fails. Now, I believe, and you can correct me, Dr. Shaw, if I'm wrong, we're down to amendment 40 now, and these are the, the overtime.
Just had a question about, since that one's on fleet management, I guess this would be for Administrator Cornell, why do the, a lot of these agencies have costs for auto repairs? Why is that outside of the fleet, is that, why do we have auto repairs in Public Works when we have fleet management?
Okay, Mr. Shaw, members of council, if you recall, we actually have an Internal Service Fund for our fleet, so what that means is, that's a separate entity within that fixes cars and trucks and tractors and all the equipment, the ambulances that we have. We charge each department so that we can track where the expenditures are coming from, and it goes to Internal Service Fund, fleet management. So it's basically just an internal transfer. So if you cut it out of a department, you're actually not going to get any cars fixed, is what happens, because Internal Service gets it from each department, that's why.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay, so we're going to pull number 40.
All right. Forty's withdrawn.
We'll pull, Mr., under number 41, Mr. Cornell, was the $238,000 in overtime budgeted for this year for solid waste, what's that for? Or again, that's for this year, that's not last year.
Right, that's for the coming, upcoming year.
Right.
2020, 2026, which is a budget.
We're already budgeting for $238,000 in overtime.
That's correct, yeah, we have a couple, a number of operations, obviously, all the convenience centers and things like that, we actually have the landfill, and we don't have a choice when the trash comes in, we have to get it covered that night, we can't leave it uncovered, so if a big load comes in toward the end of the day, it takes a while to work that, to actually compact it and then put the cover on. So it's just part of the job we have.
Would, do I have your commitment to maybe do different shifts or something like that?
We'll try, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I'll pull, I pull 41.
All right, amendment 42.
I pull 42, and then...
43.
43 would be, this may be a little bit, but these are HTAX allocations, these are the taxes that come in because of McDonald's and all these places, and then hotels between ATAX and HTAX, I think the one's named wrong, right? HTAX should be actually, is McDonald's and all that stuff, right? And first.
HTAX is hospitality tax.
Okay, that is hospitality, that's hotels.
That's food and beverage.
Okay.
Accommodation.
Accommodations, okay, okay.
For hotels.
Okay. I'll open it up to council members, I mean, I've been hearing a lot of things about disagreements with how those are allocated, but I haven't been, I don't have a good batting average tonight, so I don't feel like I'm going to get into that too deep.
Dr. Shaw, I was going to ask about this one, it really is a question for the attorney, too, but, and I was looking at these, it says amend allocations within HTAX and amend allocations within ATAX, but there's nothing to amend. I don't, I don't know if it would be in order for us to vote on these unless you had specific allocations you wanted to change, and again, this is me as a new chairman, chairman learning the ropes, but that seems like it would be out of order. I don't know if the attorney could give me any information.
Well, I can, but I think that Mr. Cornell can kind of clear up some of the things, because I think there's an ordinance issue, too, here.
Okay.
There is a separate ordinance for the HTAX that council has amended several times, there's a number of bonds out there for the HTAX that is very specific, that we have to pay for the bonds, obviously. So that's really not laid out in the budget, the budget just follows that ordinance, quite frankly. ATAX, if you recall, that just went through committee, your allocations, and then council, so that was just done.
Well, the reason I put these in here is I saw they went through line by line, basically, it was, ran through line by line in finance, so I figured this was the follow-up to that finance committee vote, where I guess finance would have been the one picking and choosing, but there was, I just thought, may, any of y'all counselors concerned that, say, BMW gets about 100,000 a year to run that golf tournament they just did? That's taxpayer money that could go to kids, you could write a bond on that for kids' soccer fields. Do you know the Highland Games get about 120, something, I'm, I'm just saying, don't, you guys, are you concerned about that? Do you have amendments about that?
But that, that's not in the budget.
Counselor Seaman.
Well, I, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would just remind this body, we have a committee that looks at those, and the committee made the recommendation, and this body has been very clear that we follow the recommendations of our committees, so I have no concerns, it's, it's passed finance, and it actually did pass council as well, so I have no concerns of where we're spending those monies and the return, and if you go back and read the committee's report to us, they can account for all the dollars that are coming back to us in additional ATAX monies from those recommendations.
That you would agree those are just studies and some...
No, sir, we have, we actually have a process and an application that each of those organizations have to fill out, and they have to prove heads and beds in order to get the money, so...
So the golf tournament brought us 85, the Greenville County, 85,000 dollars somehow in tax money or something, or?
More than that, the impact of the golf tournament.
I like to see that, I got to see that. I'm not even sure there was 85, there's probably like 85, 80, not even 85, well, I don't want to argue about it, but I'm just concerned that no council members have really gone through that and used...
The finance committee went through it, and the full council went through it, we've already approved it once.
I'm saying here, they have completely agreed with that list, is what I'm saying.
Well, then why didn't you bring up any concerns when it came before council the first time?
When you did when, what now?
Why didn't you bring up any questions about the accommodations tax list when it came before council?
Because I saw it on finance committee like two weeks ago, so then it would come here next for vote, aren't we approving it as part of the budget?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Farmer.
Ms. Seaman and I are both on the Visit Greenville SC Board, and I'm more than happy than to give you all the information on all this stuff. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a one-year budget, so, and we have to pass year two in November, I believe, so there's plenty of time for stuff to change. So what I'm just trying to tell everybody is, it's not the end of the world right now, you know? If we were talking about taking money away that was supposed to be going to the schools, and everybody thought all the schools were going to be burned down, that's ridiculous, all right? Now, I'm not saying there would be, there wouldn't be any negative consequences, but what I'm saying is, there is time to fix things in the next budget and change things around, so I think we all just got to get along right now and just get on with the rest of the agenda.
All right, anybody else? I'm going to go ahead and say that I ruled these out of order, because again, I couldn't tell you what I would want to reallocate the money to to begin with, and I don't think any of my colleagues could as well, just off the bat, and if anybody would like to peel that, that's, that's fine as well. Having said that, we are back to voting on the budget as amended, correct? Any question on the motion? Any roll call requested before I start?
Oh, yeah.
Request that roll call?
Yes, yes, roll call.
All right, roll call's been requested. Oh, he needs to be for a little while. So what I will do is... So what I will do is, uh, I will say we can take a recess, so we can have some conversations and come back, or we can just continue voting until somebody changes their mind. It's completely up to you, and I've had plenty of caffeine today, so.
Uh, under what scenario would you re-vote again? I mean, you'd have to have a reconsideration vote, I presume.
Well, yeah, to, to adopt the... Right.
Our county government's working how it should.
Well, I can't make any motions, so I'm, I'm trying to entertain one right now.
I motion for a two-minute recess. I don't want to miss a vote, and I'm going to use the restroom for a break.
All right. All in favor of probably longer than a two-minute recess, please say aye.
Aye.
Cess.
You're allowed, Mister Chairman.
We will bring this long, long Greenville County Council meeting back to order.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the budget amendment.
All right. Everybody understand the motion? Reconsider the budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider taking one million from the historic trust and putting it to soccer fields.
All right, does everybody understand the motion? And I'm just going to go ahead and request roll call myself. Counselor, trip.
No, no, not, not. I just wanted to get mine in before that, that, that got, that deal they cut got in and, and then a motion to adjourn. I wanted to try to give mine another shot.
What deal got cut?
I don't know, there was a deal cut. I don't know, there was a deal cut.
Go ahead and vote.
This is to get reconsider, uh, taking the overfunded historic trust and funding underfunded children's fields. Ever say aye?
I think so. We, we request a roll call. Yeah, sorry, I said it earlier.
Okay.
You're not the chairman.
Just having fun, it's late.
You have four in favor, eight in opposition.
All right, thank you, the amendment fails.
Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Counselor McGee.
Uh, reconsider my amendment, please. If I, if I should read it again, I can read it again.
All right, does anybody need the amendment rereads? Everybody understand this is involving the, the increases and the salary increases?
Correct, this is the tiered increase based on salaries.
All right, roll call is officially requested.
So do we have to vote on the motion to reconsider, then vote on the amendment? Correct, so there's two votes, just making sure we all know that. So the first vote is motion to reconsider, the second vote is on the amendment, if it gets most passes to reconsideration.
But we, we, can I just clarify though? Would did the one, my motion to reconsider kept it on the floor so we don't have to reconsider every time?
That's correct.
Okay, so, yeah, so we're just on your motion.
We just on your amendment.
Great, okay, just making sure we're following the procedures.
Now, 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 point of order, we have to vote to reconsider.
Yeah.
We already did.
We already did that.
The whole budget, the amendment.
We have to reconsider.
I, I think she was reconsidering the item, the agenda item which would contain all the amendments.
Right, that's what was voted on for reconsideration.
Let me see.
Back to the budget as amended.
Right, and now while it's on the floor, a motion was made by Mr. Shaw to reconsider one of the amendments, which also was reconsiderable, and then y'all voted against reconsideration of that, and then if I'm right, Mr. McGee has now brought a motion to reconsider his amendment, and we're on that vote right now.
That's correct.
So just to be clear, the motion is to reconsider.
Mr. McGee's motion, that failed earlier.
We're voting to reconsider it.
It's late, man.
Mr. Chairman, you have four in favor, eight in opposition.
All right, motion fails. Counselor Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I'd like to make a new amendment, is that in order?
If it's completely new amendment and not a motion to reconsider one of the existing ones, we would have to suspend the rule that requires a written amendment at third reading.
Okay, well, it's like, I feel like it's a half and half if we wanted to take, I don't know, I just had a thought, but I'm not sure, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. Well, so, um, a couple of the, of our colleagues amendments had, um, some affordable housing, when we were talking about the affordable housing, there was excess from GADC, so maybe this would be reconsideration of our, our First Amendment, but I had a thought of just trying to get us back to a whole on affordable housing, and specifically just using that 750 from, uh, GADC, and then adding, adding another 250 from general fund, but I don't know if the second part would be more of a...
That's up to the chair to consider whether that's in order or not.
Well, I don't think, the, the, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the 750,000, was it in any amendments pertaining to affordable housing?
It was in the first one, it was.
It was in the First Amendment.
So maybe then, how about, I'll make a motion that we reconsider the First Amendment that was originally presented on affordable housing.
So that, just to be clear for the public, that's Dr. Fant and Counselor Mitchell's amendment?
Correct, that would provide funding to establish a workforce housing down payment assistance program for Greenville County employees.
Correct.
So we just vote in to reconsider it, then we gotta change it?
Correct, yeah.
The first you reconsider.
Roll call.
Yeah, you could move to, you don't have to...
You have eight in favor, four in opposition.
All right, thank you, motion passes.
Since it's up now, you could move to amend whatever.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the motion to take, to keep the 750 increase in other revenue and add 250,000 to that, um, from our, um, fund balance, uh, to total, um, and add that back into affordable housing.
And that making clear that, that is not taking any money from the infrastructure fund for the roads?
No, no money from roads.
Okay.
I'll request a roll call on this.
I, I had a point, point of information.
Can, Dr. Shaw?
When it says from GADC, is that Philo, is that just another way, so this...
No, sir, they actually had some extra money that the GADC board gave back to the county, but that was the intent, right, that the...
Where did, where did GADC get that money?
It was from, uh, a number of unfilled positions, they went through quite a transition this past year with a couple of high level people leaving, uh, and they, um, did a good job managing their budget.
And where do they, where does GADC get its funds?
They came from the county.
From Philo?
From Philo.
From Philo, okay, so...
From the infrastructure bank.
Connecting the dots, um, okay, thank you.
I would add, they also get money from companies that support them as well, not just from the county.
But just to be clear, this money is not from, the, the stuff that corporations give GADC is, is separated from county money, this would actually be county money of origin.
Sure, I was just clarifying where GADC gets their money from.
But not this money for affordable housing.
I didn't say it was, I was just clarifying that they also get money from companies.
I'm just clarifying also.
All right, so my motion is to amend, again, the 750 plus an extra 250,000 for a million dollars back into affordable housing.
Roll call request.
You have seven in favor, five opposed.
You, the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd let... I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
All right, does everybody understand the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Wait, that was a roll call, please.
Oh, sorry, that's fine, roll call requested. That's on me, I did it every other time.
That's okay, that was a, okay, the question is...
It's just to vote on the budget as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Chairman, you have eight in favor, four in opposition.
All right, thank you, the budget passes. And just when I thought we were done, we have plenty more to go, so we will move on to ordinances at second reading. We'll begin with CZ 2025 dash zero thirty, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, property located at 317 Rocky Creek Road requesting zoning from PD to RS, the planning commission and the committee re-proved approval, recommended approval, on behalf of the committee, I move approval of ordinance at second reading.
Thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? CZ 2025 dash zero three one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, property located at 2726 Fort Scholes Road requesting zoning from RS to S1, the planning commission and committee recommend approval, on behalf of the committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
All in favor? Of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? CZ 2025 dash zero thirty-three, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, property located at 210 Earl Drive and Larry Court requesting zoning from RM 20 to AG, the planning commission and the committee recommend denial, on behalf of the committee, I move deny this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? We'll go to B, Land Development Regulations Amendment, Cluster Housing, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the committee, I move for approval at second reading, ordinance delete Article 11 of the Greenville County Land Development Regulation that prohibits new cluster developments in Greenville County.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion? Counselor Trip.
I know there's a lot of back and forth on cluster development, uh, this is a tool the state provides, do we, I mean, can we not, I don't know, offer a resolution, you know, like we did last week or two weeks ago and, and ask the planning commission not to consider plant, cluster development or something, but, I mean, are we disarming ourselves by taking this tool off the toolbox? I just ask that question.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Farmer.
I concur with, um, Mr. Trip, my main reasoning why I'm, um, voting against getting rid of Article 11 is because I was promised a workshop and didn't get one, and I think that's imperative before we move forward.
Thank you, anybody else? Dr. Fant?
There, there are some good aspects of cluster, and then there are some challenges with it. I would, we have not had a chance to really hash this out, and it really needs to be a discussion with all, all of the stakeholders, the developers, builders, home builders, you know, the conservation people, we really need to do some workshops, it's not a fire, but the fact that, I get the fact that they want to do green space and open space, but they're actually building a third more houses with cluster than the, than the original zoning even allows, so that's a little problematic. I do think there needs to be some common ground found with regards to cluster versus just saying, get rid of, and maybe we can have a stakeholder meeting, maybe a couple of them, and try to find some common ground that'll work. Can we hold it and have some workshops and let your committee do something with it? Bob?
Vice Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Before clusters do any more damage, could we put close, cluster, I'm just asking, is it possible to put, doing clusters on hold, do we come up with a remedy?
Could we not do that internally?
Well, in the meantime, we just let them, we let them...
Their committee, their committee could approve, approve or not.
Well, I guess the question would be, some clusters don't really, don't necessarily, don't, don't some clusters go just to the planning commission and don't come to council depending on where it's...
Yep, that's true.
Any in the unzoned area of the county?
So basically the only way would be to, to do a moratorium of some kind, and I don't know what that would, if we could do that in this meeting or not, but...
We would get eaten alive if we tried to do a moratorium, but I'm, I'm fa, I'm in favor of it though, till we fix it.
So, one of the, one of the comments that I think, uh, Commissioner Manning mentioned was using, you know, roads and, and, uh, the retention pods, you know, as, you know, as open space, I mean, can we not tighten up some of that stuff and mitigate some of that?
I'm su, I'm sure we can, but what, what do we do in the meantime? Can we, can we put a stop to it for a short period of time till we fix it, is that, is that a possibility even?
Well, sorry, I, I keep...
I can hear you.
Turn my, my speaker on, um, I, I mean, are there any clusters in the pipeline either on our side or the planning commission's side? I mean, you know, is it gonna, you know, could we have a workshop in the next, you know, before the next meeting, or sometime, you know, shortly thereafter? I just don't, I, I don't want to take a tool off the table that we could potentially use.
I, I would like to see it fixed, that's for sure, um, I'm just concerned with the density that they can do in the next couple of weeks, so my thought, and I guess this is to the attorney, can we stop it for two weeks, till we fix it, or do we just have to, is that in our wheelhouse, or is that something even the council wants to do?
I'm not, I'm not comfortable telling you could do that like tonight on some vote that's not on the agenda, first of all, but second of all, on top of that, I would need a little bit, I'm not saying I need two weeks to do it, but we need to do a little research because what you're talking about is a moratorium of some sort, and I need to, and I need to see what toolbox, and, and I can check to see if there's anything else in the toolbox that we can use, but I do need, yeah, I, I haven't thought through this until y'all just mentioned it, so I have ideas, but I need to research and run them down.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would be in favor of a workshop just to see if we could fix it before we're done away with it. So that would just be leaving this on hold?
Yeah.
Is that what we... Once a month, will we come back? I can, I can live with putting it on hold till we, till we come back. Okay, it just needs to be fixed, I don't, I'm not in favor of just getting rid of it, but it does need to be fixed. I really don't want to get rid, rid of anything till we have a remedy for it, so... Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Counselor.
Here, here's the problem, as I watched council last year operate, and I'm watching it operate now, you send these things into the, and the developers love it, we send this into the oblivion of, of promises of this and that, and then nothing happens, and here four months from now will be some, you know, in my district, there'll be people terribly upset that four cluster developments are going up in neighborhoods that don't even resemble them, so I, I ask you all to consider that as, that sometimes the only way to fix things around here is to kill them, because otherwise you get no one's attention and you go nowhere. We're spinning our wheels, we're doing it again, I, I just ask you to, you know, hey, we can fix it quick, but let's, let's get it, let's kill it, so that way there is some urgency under the people that want it back to fix it and bring it back correctly.
Counselor, Vice Chairman?
Again, I don't, I, I'd rather be able to fix it, um, I can come back in a month with amendments to fix this, if, if allowed to through the planning, I think we, I don't think it's gonna be hard to fix, uh, I hesitate now once I think about killing it, but I would, uh...
So you could have amendments by July 15th or meeting on 15th? I move to hold it until July 15th.
All right, does everybody understand the motion? Roll call just to continue forward with the process.
Yes, please.
Good luck with that.
Seven in favor, five in opposition.
All right, so the motion to hold passes, and it will be brought back up at the meeting on the 15th. All right, next we have item C, Stormwater Ordinance Revisions, Counselor McGee.
Second, ordinance second reading, item 11C, Stormwater Ordinance Revisions Motion, I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to amend the Greenville County Stormwater Management Ordinance to implement requirements and procedures and compliance with federal and state regulations pursuant to the county's NDP DES permit, at this time I'd like to submit amendment to page, oh, I just had it out and we scrolled off it, sorry, uh... Hold on, pardon me, let me go back to this iPod, I'm not trying, here you go, on page six, section 857, Prohibitions and Exemptions, uh, the way we amended it last time where it was changed by staff... The way we amended it last time where it was changed by staff, I, I'd like to change it further. I'd like to make, uh, section eight dash five seven, section two, subsection B. Uh, it's currently, the red line is if retail sales will be part of activity on the parcel supports agritism. Agritourism, I would like it to read to say, and I'll read the whole sentence here, after it talks about land disturbing activities, it says all the things you're allowed to do, but then except, and that's when it says, except if retail sales. I'd like it now to read, if retail sales not directly related to products produced on the property will be part of the activity on the parcel, supports agritism, agritourism, where the construction of agricultural structures on the disturbance of one or more acres of land are not exempt from the provisions of this ordinance. So basically, what I'm saying is, this is to prevent event barns, uh, wine bars, whatever, that's not directly related to the products produced on the property. I want every farmer out there to have a farm stand and sell all the vegetables he can, I, I, we stop and buy those all the time. That is not what this is intended to do. This is intended, the farmer who parades as a farmer from starting an event barn and disturbing less than one acre and not having to meet any permitting or any LDRs or anything, just go out there and build they want because we have failed to do our proper duty to get that and make it safe. I mean, what happens if they, they, do we know if they have enough doors in the building per the fire code? We don't know. So those are things that I'm trying to prevent here with this amendment. Again, I'll read it again, the amendment would say, if retail sales not directly related to products produced on the property will be part of the activity on the parcel, meaning those things will not be exempt.
All right, Counselor Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had some really good conversations back in committee on this, and definitely, uh, to Counselor McGee's point, clearly there's some people sort of skirting the law on this issue, and this is a really good cleanup, I think, and meets the intent of what we meant by this, so I'm in support of the amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Trip?
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor McGee.
It's, it's part of what's required by the federal government and stuff, how much land you disturb and what kind of permitting you have to do. Currently, with agriculture procedures, it's actually, it's actually, you're allowed to do a lot of things. And even under the county, uh, reg, LDRs, you can do, with under agric, agriculture, you're allowed to do a lot of things that you can't do under, say, if you own five acres that were zoned R12, there's, you could do things they could do in agriculture with that same parcel of land. So what's happening now in the county is there are some places that have put up event barns and things like this that have disturbed more land than they, than they're allowed to. Uh, but we can't really say anything because then, you know, they're, they're claiming they're agriculture and they're allowed to do that, so they're skirting the intent of the law. So this is basically trying to clean that up and saying, hey, if, yeah, I'm not against you selling, if you grow tomatoes, sell all tomatoes you can, but if you sell tomatoes and you want to put up a wi, a wine bar, no, you don't sell, you don't, you don't make grapes and wine on your farm, so no, you can't do that.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Counselor Long?
Mr. McGee, just a quick question, I want to make sure, um, in, in the amendment on here, it said an acre, it was, how would that change that acre statement in there?
If, yes, and for two A, is the one with construction improvement, single family residence is still the 500 square feet, which is not amended. This is saying at the bottom, uh, there, the construction of an agricultural structure resulting in disturbance of one or more acres, so are not exempt from the provision. So if you, if, if you are selling vegetables and you want to disturb two acres, you have to get a permit. Because obviously there are stormwater things that we have to follow by the federal government that we can actually end up getting fined for if we don't enforce them.
Right, so I just want to make sure the acre still applied there.
Yes, ma'am, at the bottom.
And it wasn't 5,000 square feet, thank you.
Correct, 5,000 for, for a fa, a single family residence or their accessory buildings, but then if you're gonna build a building that's for something, to sell your products, you get up to an acre.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for that clarification.
Anybody else? All right, so this is for the, this is an amendment to the ordinance, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Now we will vote on the motion as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. We will, and just to be clear, was I able to do that because somebody else needed to make the motion to him? Just so we don't catch it afterwards?
I know it's getting late too, so, uh, technically a motion would be made by somebody for that.
Okay, just to be clear, let's do it the right way, so somebody make a motion so I didn't do it wrong.
Make a motion to pass the amendment as amended.
Thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. Next we have D, Chapman Grove Road Transfer of Property, Counselor Collins.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Chapman Grove Road Transfer of Property. I make a motion and I move to approve at second reading an ordinance to authorize the sale of a county-owned approximately 5.3 acre parcel of real property located on Chapman Grove Road, Pelzer. And to authorize the chairman of county council and the county administrator to execute appropriate deeds and agreement.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion?
This is the one that the family, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Trip?
I was just gonna ask, are we selling this back to the family or what, um, I know there was some questions about this last year.
Yeah, I, I'll let them answer. I believe we're turning it over to a group that is, is, will be handling it for the family.
It has a reversionary clause that if we no longer use it for recreation, it goes back to the family.
Okay, so are we selling it to them?
No, no, they receive it for nothing.
Dr. Shaw, do you have something?
Thank you, I just, I do remember this from last year, it's just, it's nice to see that the family and the public, maybe some council members brought this to light, that maybe it didn't seem good on the surface, and it looks like the good's coming out of it in the end here.
Thank you, all right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry, Counselor Long?
I just said aye.
Oh, that was you, I'm sorry, I thought it was her.
Collins make his amendment?
Yeah, I have to make the amendment.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, you're good. I move to amend the ordinance to reflect the changes outlined in the red line version included in the agenda packet.
All right, everybody understand the motion for the amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, then Counselor, I'll let you make the motion to amend the amendment.
Yes, sir. I move, uh, approval of the ordinance as amended.
Thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We'll now move to ordinances at first reading, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I present for the first reading zoning dockets CZ 2025 dash thirty-eight and CZ dash two twenty-five dash forty to CZ 2025 dash oh forty-two.
Thank you, and we will refer these to Planning and Development, and item B.
Yes, sir. I present for first reading ordinance to amend sections eight point five of the ESDPM of Aramont Sensative District Parish Mountain of the Greenville County Zoning Reg, ordinance regarding districts intent and protect team public safety on Altman Road.
Thank you, Counselor, and then we'll, we'll refer that to Planning and Development as well. Next we have committee reports. To public comments, and I believe we have one speaker who, if they're still here, they have hung out with us, and they deserve every second. The name, I, I found it, um, Ms. Gladys DeValle, you still with us? Well, if you know Gladys, tell her we're sorry we lasted so long, she didn't get to speak, she's more welcome to come back and address it at a different time. All right, so next we will move on to administrator's report. So request the motions by council members, anything else you'd like to share?
Mr. Chair?
Counselor Mitchell?
About an hour's worth of, um, comments for this section, but because it's so late, I'm going to forego my comments for tonight. And thank all of my fellow council persons for, um, restoring my amendment, or our amendment.
All right, thank you, and we'll look forward to your hour next time. One final motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good night, everybody.